I call the march.
We're late, but not that bad.
Yeah, the March meeting of Manzanita City Council to order. I won't hit the gavel again if once is more than ample with that. The public have been invited to watch the meeting on the city's YouTube channel or by logging into the Zoom video conference as an attendee. So welcome to everyone, whether you're here in person or at home. The public may submit comments and writing by email to cityhall@ci.manzanita.org.us. There will be opportunities for the public to give oral testimony during today's meeting. When it is time to take public comments, staff will monitor the Zoom participant list to see if any of them would like to speak. And we will take comments in the order that we are, that they are received and seen. And as always, Nancy, our intrepid person on the end of the road there will be monitoring that for us and helping. So before I move to the first orders of business, which are two really nice proclamations. Is there anything else I need to start with? We good to go?
You're good.
Okay. So first off, I would like to introduce someone. Her name is Ketsel Levine. She's here with us tonight. Yeah, Ketsel actually is a personal friend, someone that we've gotten to know very well through the Hoffman Center and particularly through her work in the garden there. She has an official title at the Hoffman, which is Horticultural Arts Program Lead. So she's one of the program leads for all of the many parts of the Hoffman. As you know, they offer quite a wide range of things. And we're here to kind of revisit a little bit of history with Ketsel. And I've got a proclamation that I'd like to read that we've got all done up that actually was instituted a handful of years ago by her and former Mayor Mike Scott, having to do with the Manzanita. Not the town, not the name of something, except the shrub, the shrub Manzanita. So I want to ask Ketsel, before I read the proclamation, would you like to approach the mic and say a few words about this before I read it?
Yeah.
Great.
If it's best if I sit?
I think so, for the sound, yeah.
Well, when I first got to town, which was in 2017 and learned, of course, the name of our town was Manzanita. I began to ask around to see whether or not people were growing the plant that I know and love as Arctostaphilus. And lo and behold, everyone was telling me that Arctostaphilus didn't do well here. And I started to look into that and realized that some of the issue was that there weren't very many plants in the trade to try. But what there was was a lot of native Arctostaphilus in the woods. And people in town have, over the years, tried unsuccessfully to dig up some of the wild Manzanitas and replant them. And guess what? Manzanitas completely resent replanting. And when it became clear that Manzanitas would indeed thrive here, we began to talk at the Hoffman Center and with friends in town about, wouldn't it be great to put the Manzanita back in Manzanita and to celebrate our namesake shrub? So we began that campaign in, by coming to the city council and asking whether or not we might not have a Manzanita Day proclaimed in order to celebrate the plant that spells home. And lo and behold, here we are four years later, and we now have distributed and sold countless Manzanitas of countless varieties to gardeners up and down the North Coast and further afield during our Manzanita Day plant sales, which traditionally have been associated with March 31st. And we celebrate the Manzanita in the wonder garden, the Hoffman Central Wonder Garden, with a display of different Manzanitas all along Lenita Avenue, which you can all invite everyone to come visit the Manzanitas right across the street from the Hoffman, proving that Manzanitas absolutely thrive in our town. So it's been a wonderful journey. And it started with a proclamation. And if I can say, nudging me all along was Leila Salmon, and I thank her.
So I'm going to read the proclamation. And I'd like to say thank you. I mean, your, your work up there affects more people than you realize. That garden is a beautiful thing to drive by. And I still remember during COVID, when everything was so quiet and dark, there was some light in that garden, and it was always beautiful to go through in the evening. So thank you very much to you and all the people, because I realize it's not just you.
Oh, yeah.
You know, there, your hardy team.
Yes, thank you, Kets.
So let me formalize this with a proclamation. Whereas, which is language that's always in proclamations, whereas the city of Manzanita has proudly shared its name with the beautiful shrub Manzanita for more than 100 years. And whereas our local Manzanita thrives in the wild, but is rare in commerce. And whereas historically, Manzanita was highly valued by Native Americans for culinary and medicinal purposes. And whereas two naturally occurring varieties of Manzanita have been discovered in the area, named and introduced to the horticultural trade. And whereas Manzanita citizens honor the shrub for its beauty, variety, and unique history. And whereas the meaning of the word Manzanita in Spanish is little apple, and Native Americans know it as bearberry or kinnik-kinnik. And whereas Manzanitas continue to grace public and private gardens throughout the city. Now therefore, I, Catherine Stock, Mayor of the City of Manzanita, a municipal corporation in the county of Tillamook in the great state of Oregon, do hereby proclaim March 31, 2024 as Manzanita Day and encourage citizens and businesses of Manzanita to honor its namesake bush by planting, cultivating, and otherwise celebrating the day with a variety of activities in the hope that in future years, March 31 will continue to be celebrated in honor of the shared heritage by Spanish-speaking peoples, Native Americans, current residents, and visitors by the Manzanita shrub. In witness thereof, and with the consent of the city council, I'll look for a nod on this, of the city of Manzanita, I have here unto set my hand on this sixth day of March 2024. The council's with me on that, I presume? Okay, we're signed, and thank you very much.
All the hard work, Ketsel.
Yeah, thanks. Okay. Secondly, and so I'm going to look for some help. Do we have Janay Pierce-Mushen?
She's here.
Hey, she's. Hi, Janay.
There she is. Hello.
Good to see you. So I'm hoping I've got your name remotely right, because we corresponded, but I haven't actually spoken with you. So Janay, Pierce-Mushen?
Pierce-Mushen, you got it right, yes.
Okay, great. So Janay, you're here because we're about to make another proclamation about the American Red Cross. And I have that proclamation, which is the information you sent to us. Do you want to say a few words in advance of reading that?
Mayor, city councillors, thank you so much for this privilege to have you guys do March, you know, become March American Red Cross. We appreciate your help. And as you know, we are here whenever you need us. I know we don't have a lot of volunteers in, you know, in our areas, but the ones that you have, we are very willing to provide any service that you guys need. Blood drives, you know, the fire campaign is pretty important. So if you guys know of anybody that needs free smoke alarms, please don't hesitate to reach out to us, reach out to me, and we will make sure that those people have them. You know, just want to make sure that you guys know we are here. We may not be a lot of us, but we are here in our areas. So thank you.
Thank you, Janay. And again, thanks for the, the work that you and your organization do. It's, it has to be one of the most famous organizations in the United States, I would think, in terms of people really understanding what that cross stands, what that cross stands for and the work that you do. So thanks.
I just like to, I just like to say a word, Janay, there really are a fairly significant number of Red Cross volunteers in the area. We work closely with your shelter volunteers, and we work very closely with you. So this is an area where you will find a lot of Red Cross volunteers.
Yes, we, we work very close. I'm actually located in Cannon Beach, so I'm always working with Lila and, you know, everybody there. We, you know, we, we're trying to meet more often because of the fact that, you know, but, but, you know, what I'm saying is, we do have quite a bit, but we don't have as many as they have in Portland, but we're still quite mighty and, you know, we, we do our, the best.
Always use more, always use more. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, so I'm going to read a proclamation then. We have that whereas language again, so here we go. Whereas during American Red Cross month, month in March, we recognize the compassion of people in Manzanita and reaffirm our commitment to care for one another in times of crises. And whereas this generous spirit is woven into the fabric of our community and advances the humanitarian legacy of American Red Cross founder Clara Barton, one of the most honored women in our country's history, who nobly dedicated herself to alleviate suffering. And whereas kind-hearted individuals in our, in our community exemplify Barton's commitment as they step up through Oregon and Southwest Washington to provide a beacon of hope for our neighbors in need. Through their voluntary, voluntary and selfless contributions, they make a life-saving difference in people's darkest hours, whether it's delivering shelter, food, and comfort during disasters, providing critical blood donations for hospital patients, supporting military families, veterans, and caregivers through the unique challenges of service, saving lives with first aid, CPR, and other skills, or delivering aid and reconnecting loved ones separated by global crises. Now therefore, I, Catherine Stock, Mayor of the City of Manzanita, municipal corporation in the county of Tillamook in the great state of Oregon, do hereby proclaim March 2024 as Red Cross Month in honor of all those who lead with their hearts to serve people in need, and I encourage all citizens of Manzanita to join this commitment to strengthen our community. In witness thereof, and with the consent of city council of the city of Manzanita, I will set forth my hand on this sixth day of March 2024. Thank you very much for your help.
Thank you. I really wanted to be there, but I was volunteering at the Cannon Beach Food Pantry, and we have a lot of sick people out there, so couldn't make it tonight. Thank you so much.
Well, I, I think you made the right choice, and, and the hat looks really good on you, too.
It's cold out there, trust me. It's, I was happy that I was wearing this hat.
Looks good. All right. Well, thanks so much, Janay, and we appreciate it. All right. So two proclamations for very nice reasons. The next part of our agenda is audience participation. And I'm going to remind people again of, of what this section of the agenda is and why we do it the way that we do. So this is the part of the agenda during which council will hear community member's statements regarding city business. Comments must be limited to city business topics that are not on the agenda. Those wishing to speak should use the sign-in sheet, which I'm sure you did if you were here in person. If you're online somewhere, you can raise your hand, and we'll get help from Nancy. I'm acknowledging you, hopefully in order, and then hear your comments. Before you make your comment, please state your name and your city of residence for the record. And as council has, obviously, and always, other business items on the agenda will be limiting speakers to three minutes each. Because information provided during community comments may be new, the city manager will respond at the next council meeting if there are comments that require follow-up. So before we begin tonight, Leila, is there any follow-up from the February 7 commentary? There's not? We're good. Okay. So has anybody in the audience here tonight signed up to speak? Nancy? Great.
Dennis Tong.
Dennis, great. Welcome back, Dennis.
Did you see, you state your city of residence and your name?
Yes, I'm Dennis Tong. I live in Manzanita, 170 Beezwax Lane. Good evening.
Good evening. Hi.
Manager Lila. Mayor Catherine, councilors Linda and Jerry and Brad, and congrats, Tong, on your appointment.
Thank you so much.
So the agenda item appeared before you last year sometime to suggest that a 20 mile per hour speed limit would be in the best interest of our community. I believe that I had support from public safety personnel regarding this issue. And I still believe now, as I did then, that prevention is the best medicine regarding public safety. And so I, I'm here to, to find out if the issue is percolating to the top of the city's business. Is, is it possible that I kind of find out where you all are regarding hosting that speed limit throughout, throughout the city of Manzanita prior to our next vacation season?
So as I said, normally, we don't respond. We're taking in the question. I want to, but I know there has been work done in this, so I'm going to ask for some direction from our city manager, Lila. Do you want to respond briefly to that, just so we can get the sense of it? And then I think there probably be good some, it'd probably be good to have some follow-up with Dennis following the meetings since, and I remember, and honestly, Dennis, it, it takes more than we sometimes think it should to make something a law, and Lila will talk about that, but I have started driving 20, and I think about you when I do that. It's not always as easy as you think it would be. And I look down and go, 20 is plenty, okay. So that's just my personal thing. It has nothing to do with it being law. That's just me, so.
You're a good Roma.
Yeah. So Lila, let's just have a few words about this, and then we can come back with a fuller explanation next meeting.
Sure, no problem. Well, Dennis, we are, we are working on it. And I think I just would echo what the mayor said, that it takes time to implement some of these items, and we have to balance it with the capacity we have and other priorities. What we have done since your initial, you know, bringing this up, staff had already been kind of noodling the idea, so you helped give us a little extra push to push it forward. So we've done the research we need to do to understand what changes we need to make and what potentially an ordinance we would need to put in place in order to make that happen. So that's, that's on the docket for the future, and it likely won't happen until after the budget's adopted, which is going to happen in early June. So I'm expecting that the majority of this work will pick up after the second half of the year. In the meantime, what we are doing is we will be, and I've been working with Public Works and with the police department, to identify signage and doing a cost estimate for that signage. And I am anticipating including that in the fiscal year budget for next fiscal year. So once we kind of have those two pieces in place, then we can start to really move forward on that, and the implementation will go a lot quicker. So we are kind of doing background work on it as we can. We've done a lot of analysis in terms of where we need to place signs, what those signs might look like, whether or not they're going to be those dynamic signs like you see on Lenita, and we have one on Classic. So we're working together to try to come up with a package, but we also have to balance it with quite a lot of other things that are happening at the moment. So I anticipate that we will have it implemented by the end of the year. That's our goal. And I know the idea and the dream would be to try to do it by summertime. We will expedite it as quickly as we can, but I also just want to be realistic about the capacity that we have to do it.
Given your policies and procedure, is it fair to ask the councillors if they stand behind this proposal? Are you?
Well, that's a great question. And the, well, I guess this is a new council. I have received directions to proceed with it. I have not received direction to not. So I think the consent is there. When staff brought this originally to council, the direction was proceed, come back to us with a plan and a strategy to do it. So you'll see the steps kind of, I think you'll see through the budget process, whatever that outcome is, that if that package is included in the budget and the budget is adopted, that's consent to move forward with those items, right? Because there's authorization to spend resources to get what we need to do done. Because these things are, there's costs associated with them.
I fully understand that. So if I understand the process, when it comes time to make a decision regarding the budget, that's where the councillors weigh in?
The council's part of the budget committee, so they weigh in in that space, and then they ultimately adopt the budget. So there's kind of a financial and a policy element to the implementation of this. And so we're looking and trying to do elements of that concurrently, but we do need resources in order to develop and implement those, that policy. So, so that's where we're headed. Council will provide its consent effectively by approving an ordinance. And so we'll start work on probably a work session version of that later in the summer, get feedback, make adjustments as we need to, and then get a final ordinance in place. And then we can start to implement the signage and all of that. So we're being strategic as we budget to make sure that we're anticipating that's going to happen. And until I get direction otherwise, staff is going to proceed with that direction.
So Dennis, I think since we heard from you last, I, I, speaking for myself, but I think I'm speaking for the council, we all strongly supported the idea of 20 is plenty. What I've learned, being on this council for years, is it always takes longer than you think it's going to. And it has to be balanced, but I can assure you that there's a strong support for that. And we've gotten very good partnership with Lila and the staff in moving that forward. But it has, it has to be balanced with other things, but you do have strong support for that. And just, I hate to ask it, but if you could be just patient, we'd really, you'll see it, you'll see it happening, I'm sure.
Thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
Dennis, and don't hesitate to reach out in between meetings as well. I mean, it's good to come and ask it here. That's an excellent way to do it. And the phone call or an email is also quite welcome, so.
Absolutely.
Just when you're walking in my neighborhood. I stay in, and on Cherry, we have a neighbor that's already posted signs since, say, 2020.
Okay.
So I know you've seen them, Dennis.
Thanks very much.
Thank you again for your time.
Thank you. Nancy, do we have anything else? Anybody else signed up here? Okay, so do we have anybody online? None? Okay, great. All right.
Oh, we have one now.
Sorry?
One just popped up.
Great. Who is that?
How you doing? Go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, you can.
I, I just like, I wouldn't want to let this opportunity pass, but to acknowledge the passing of Phyllis Scott, the wife of our former, former mayor for many years, Mike Scott. She was very heavily involved in the community with the Women's Club and the Tour of Homes and Pine Grove, and I worked with her on a number of things. And so I think she's one of the many people in the community who do very positive things, and they're part of the fabric, the strength of this, this community. So I just wanted to acknowledge her passing and say, I personally appreciate all that she did for our town. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave. That was important.
Thanks for posting her obituary on social media. I think a lot of people didn't realize that she had gone.
You're welcome.
Yeah. Also, she was a quiet contributor, and sometimes people don't realize the extent of what someone has done. And so, yeah, thank you, Dave, very much. It's, that's much appreciated.
If I could note, Phyllis participated on the community body that did the transportation systems claim. She participated in that process and was a real big part of it, so.
That's excellent.
Contributions.
Well, maybe when we get to the stage of beginning to be able to implement some of those things, seriously, we can remember Phyllis and the other people who contributed and make sure they're acknowledged at that point. It'll be. Okay. Thank you, Lila. Okay, so we're going to move on to the consent agenda next. So consent agenda items are approved in one motion, and any council member may remove an item for separate consideration if we do need to discuss it separate. Tonight's consent agenda includes minutes of the city council meeting from February 7, the regular session, the February 14 Valentine's Day work session, approval for bills, of bills for payment, including approval of all checks proceeding that have been proved by the city manager and city council. Does any member of the council wish to remove an item from the consent agenda for separate discussion?
No.
No? Okay. So I would like to have someone, or I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
So moved.
Okay. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Okay. A unanimous approval of the consent agenda is not unusual, but it's nice to have that done and move on, so thank you. We've got some informational items next, so first up will be the city manager report. Lila, are there updates on the community for the count or for the council to report on at this time?
Yes, I believe there are a few things. Sir, I'm going to focus primarily on one and the two that are related, but folks may have read that the city of Manzanita received a direct appropriation from the legislature in the amount of 2.7 million dollars for infrastructure to help support needed housing. This is, I think we're all a little speechless. I might be a little bit clunked. It's a big deal. It's an enormous deal. And I do want to take a moment to acknowledge a number of people who helped us get there. And I also want to kind of acknowledge and appreciate the work of this council and the previous councils in supporting a more strategic direction in how we do infrastructure investments in this town. I know even prior to my arrival, there was a real appetite for the city to start to develop what we call a capital improvement plan. So a strategic plan that relates to our infrastructure, that gives us sort of a pathway forward to implement important public works projects. And so last year, through a lot of blood, sweat, and tears, when I acknowledged our public works director, Dan Whitesell, who worked really hard with me on developing the city's first CIP. I waxed on quite a bit about how important strategy is and how important it is for us to be thinking five, 10 years into the future. And even if we have projects that are outside of the resources that we have, knowing their importance, how they fit in with our community and our plans, our goals, and our priorities is critical, because when you have that organization in place and an opportunity arises, you can respond, and you can respond quickly, organized, and ready. So the city received a request from the League of Oregon Cities back in November. I was going on vacation to Hawaii a few days later, to provide any shovel-ready projects that could leverage housing affordability. I think most folks here probably know that we got a preview of a proposal up in the Highlands part of our urban growth boundary that will ultimately lead to about 130 units, if approved, affordable housing units. And staff have been working really hard on that with the various entities that are involved. We also knew that we didn't have adequate infrastructure to serve it, that there's issues with getting adequate fire flow and water flow up into the Highlands and into our UGB area, and also knowing that there was a project in our CIP that could help sort of fill a big piece of that. So that, and knowing that the council's direction and the support we have of the community to help with the potential for affordable housing, that this project really rose to the top. And so when we got that request, we were able to respond quickly. We were able to be nimble and get that information, and I think they gave us like four days, put it together, and they collected all that data and then said, thanks very much. And that's the last we ever heard of it. We got a call that we had received a direct appropriation. And I do also want to acknowledge that, you know, I've been, this has been a project that's been really important to me, to staff, to the city, to the community and to our council. And so we had been trying to find alternate ways to implement the project in a more cost-effective way. And so through Linda's help and through a couple of our county commissioners, we engaged with our local caucus of state representatives. I want to specifically acknowledge David Gomburg, Representative David Gomburg, and Senator Susan Weber, and said, hey, if there's any money that's going out through this legislative session. And said, hey, if there's any money that's going out through this legislative session related to infrastructure for housing, let us know. We got a project. So we put in a separate request, which was for less money because we wanted to get it. And we ended up getting our original ask. They called about, I think, a quarter of the projects that the LLC had collected back in November. And ours was one of those. And that's largely because of, again, I think the strategic planning we had done, the clear priority of this council and of the community to implement this. We got the money and so we're really excited about it. It's, it's on the governor's desk. So, you know, there's still potential, things could change. But given her real focus on providing housing, and this is part of what she calls her emergency housing stability and production package. I feel pretty confident that that will, will end up working out for us. And so, so a lot more to come on that. But there was a lot of people that really helped make that happen. And I just, I'm a bit over the moon, but we got it. So Dan and I both, it's like you're excited, but then you want to throw up too because you're like, now I got to build this. We're really positioned to do that. And we've actually been working with some property owners who we would need to work with in order to build that project. And we've gotten quite a lot of support from them to get an easement. And so anyway, the pieces are moving. We feel really great. We're grateful to the legislature and I really hope to see that this will get constructed and the housing will get built. So related to that, the planning commission hearing will happen on Monday at 11 o'clock at 4:00 PM. And the action here is a rezoning of 10 acres of land from R2 to the seasonal recreational zone for the purpose of construct, creating affordable housing. So the developer is coming in, the landowner, to ask the city to rezone that land. And they are intending to restrict the use of that land for affordable housing only. It's a 10 acre site. They have two separate projects that they're working with separate developers on. Those will come later. But the idea will be at the end of the day, there'll be 120 units of affordable housing there. So that's going to planning commission on Monday. If that's approved, then we will be able to provide a letter of support to one of the projects that will be applying for state funding. This project actually was the first on the list, from what I understood, for state funding last year. But because the zoning wasn't in place, they did not get the allocation. So this is a big step for them. So it's just kind of a beautiful thing that we're starting to see. You know, I don't want to jinx ourselves, but things, the puzzle pieces are becoming clear. And I'm hoping to see that they'll all fit together. So it's a big deal. And then court open to the public on the 22nd, 1:30 at the Nahalem Bay Fire Station. So with that, I'll hand it back.
Okay, thank you very much. Yeah, I mean, the workforce housing, there's different language, workforce housing, affordable housing, the missing middle housing, all of that is incredibly important to residents here. Whether they are in need of that housing or know people who are in need of that housing. So, yeah, and this is where things that seem very daunting to begin with, you know, how are we going to solve that problem? Gets solved because a lot of people work together. The county commissioners, several, all of them really, have done amazing work in this area. It lines up with the state's goals. We get money, you know, that always helps. And then we've got our own planning that's been going on for a while that now can kind of come to fruition. So it's, it's really good because this is, this is by far one of the most important issues the, the county actually as a whole faces. And we're a part of that. So thanks. And that was really, although a surprise, it was a lovely surprise to get that, that, you know, amount of money. So, yeah, it's good. Okay, so we're going to go across council now and just see what updates council members have to offer on any of their activities if they'd like. So Brad, do you want to start us off?
Just one quick one. You may have seen an article on VBQ. I think some people copied and pasted it onto Facebook or other social media sites. We have created a group email address for city council. So in our efforts to continue making accessibility to us with questions or comments, we now have one email address. It is citycouncil@ci.manzanita.or.us. All the councilors have access to the shared mailbox. So if you want to send the message to all of us, you have one email address to send it to versus five. You, of course, are still welcome to contact us individually if you feel more comfortable speaking with a specific counselor. So that has been completed. Thank you, Linda, for being my guinea pig during the testing process. And thank you, Josh, for supporting that.
Yeah.
One thing to ask is, Josh, could you put that email address on the council page next to our email addresses? So we'll publish that on the website, so it'll be there. So please feel free to use that to get in contact with the entire team of five.
Brad, if you would, please slowly.
City Council. And then the rest is the same as all of our other email addresses.
Thank you.
And it will soon be on the website. So if you go to the council page, you'll see it there as well.
Thanks very much.
Thanks, Brad. Jerry?
Yeah, before, before I say my thing, just Leila, if the good news on the state money holds up, incorporate that into the next fiscal year budget?
I haven't even started thinking about that. If we know, yeah, if it's confirmed and we get it in time.
Yes.
I'm in budget right now. The worst case, we'll do a supplemental.
Right. Okay. Okay, so my sort of designated project has been the revenue diversification effort. And we've been on hold somewhat, waiting for the full council to materialize. We now have that. We are going to have a goal-setting session on Friday in which we'll talk about, among other things, our communication goals. So I'm hoping that we can get deeply into the conversation. I know pun intended about conversations with councilors regarding revenue diversification, how to roll that out, how to stage it. It's going to be an ongoing issue for several years. And so we don't want to do it all in one shot. And there's a lot of timing issues involved. So we'll be beginning to chew on that a little bit more aggressively with the goal-setting session on Friday. But I did want to just mention that my understanding is Manzanita today, in its next issue, is going to do a pretty good deep dive comparing certain financial metrics, fiscal metrics from several coastal cities. And I think from the description I have of, of the effort that Manzanita today is making, it'll be a really good sort of baseline set of information for the community to digest and understand. It's going to put us all, not, not on a one uniform set of facts that are going to serve us well throughout the entire revenue diversification discussion. But I do think it'll, it'll be a step in that direction and certainly an eye-opener for some folks. And it'll just be a good stage setter for this process. So I'm, I'm saying a lot of good things about something I haven't read yet, so. I'm not wrong. I look forward to it coming out and hopefully we'll be able to refer back to it in the future as we continue to talk about it.
Thank you, Jerry. Linda?
I have a couple of things. So Lee Hiltonbrand and Dan Weitzel are working on the grant application from the Oregon Office of Resilience and Emergency Management for supplies for resilience for the city of Manzanita. Orem is one of those organizations, state organizations that really does talk to the people on the ground. And Lee has just done an exceptional job of making sure that we're taking advantage of what could be a pretty lucrative grant opportunity for both, for the city of Manzanita primarily, but for other areas in the region. One of the things that you will notice is city council is reaching out more aggressively and more consistently to get input from the community about how we can do our job better and how we can communicate better with the, with the community in and of itself. One of the first things was the, the email, city council email and ask a counselor process. We wanted to make sure that we were available and open to answer any questions that came along. We have gotten a couple of emails already. And one of the emails suggested a very, a very good idea. And that is every couple of months, we'll get back to the community to talk about what kind of questions we've had and what the answers to those questions. And if we do get significant questions, pretty consistently, we'll do an FAQ on the website. So it's not just answering one, it's answering to the community. You'll also notice a change in the seating tonight. We, we're moving this way instead of this way. And that was a, that was a recommendation from somebody in the community. And the reason that we're doing that is that there was a lot of concern about seeing the speaker, that people behind, just notice we've put somebody in the done seat back there. So, but sitting behind, it isn't as easy to certainly see. And Kessel was a beautiful example of really wanting to see the person as they communicate whatever issue they have. So I'm going to ask that we move the table back a little bit so in the next council meeting so that there'll be more opportunity to actually face the speaker. And Josh is also, there was some concern about sound in the Pine Grove. And I think Josh has done an excellent job, just an excellent job of making the sound, increasing the sound. Another suggestion on the, from the community was to put a summary on the front page of the agenda. So that as, so rather than having to search for the agenda to see if you wanted to come to a meeting, it will be on the front page and it will be in less than legalistic terms. So it'll talk a little bit about what it means and why this is important, like the DMP will be talking about later, why that's really an important issue and why you should be concerned about it. So go to the front page for that if that's of interest to you. The, we'll be talking a little bit later about the water issues. And just to build on what Jerry was saying, Manzanita Today does an excellent job in terms of researching, getting data. And if you're interested in the history of the, of the water system and why we are where we are right now as we begin to face the issues we're going to be facing, the July 2022, Manzanita Today is excellent. It gives you a lot of good history and background. And then lastly, there's been a lot of concern about our billing. And we're going to be talking about that later, about our billing. But I had several people reach out to me to talk about other communities. And it's kind of interesting. Five of the cities, seven cities in Tillamook County have monthly billing. There are Tillamook, Bay City, Garibaldi, Nahalem, Manzanita, Pacific City and Nea Connie both have monthly billing. Wheeler has bi-monthly billing, but they're talking about taking it back to monthly billing. And essentially Rockaway is the only one that has, does not have monthly billing. So I called a couple of the city managers to ask why they did monthly billing, why they didn't bill orderly or others. And their comment was it gives the people an ability to budget month by month. It is an easier way for people to pay it and that there was some possibility of conservation at the same time. So that's, that was their reasoning for keeping it on monthly. And I didn't hear any indication of change. And then the last thing is I don't know whether you noticed in the packet, but city is now putting the emails that respond to an issue right behind the agenda item on the issue. And it makes it really easy to follow. I mean, it was really good. So I suggest if you're interested in that, that you check that out. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Tom?
Well, thank you. I'm the newest member, so I don't think I have all that substance that I can report to the group. But I guess I just want to say thank you for letting me serve. It's an honor and I appreciate it, but it's made my last month absolutely crazy. So, you know, I've, I've been thrown into the deep end. I've attended a work session, an executive session and this meeting, plus the prep time for each of those. And we've had getting acquainted sessions, one-on-one, meeting with each of the councilors, me with the city manager, and I met with Leila via Zoom for the meeting today, all to be prepared for today's meeting. Everybody's giving Leila and Chip pat on the head for Manzanita Today. I spent an afternoon being interrogated by them. Interviewed, I'm sorry. Yeah, interviewed. Had the opportunity to meet some staff. So I've met Nancy and Nina and I got to tell you, I think they do absolutely work. So I'm very appreciative of what I'm seeing going on there. And to, since we are going into the budgets cycle, I've been encouraged mostly by Chip Greening to sign up for the Department of Revenue budget classes. And so I'm signed up for those. And actually, the first session was today, but it was live only in Albany. So I decided I probably needed to be here. I promised myself when I took on this responsibility that I wasn't going to diminish the work that I do at the Nahalem Valley Historical Society. And so I, I just, that's, that's some of the fun I get in life. And not this past Friday, but the Friday before, I went to Tillamook and the historical society was recognized with an excellence and cultural heritage award and it was a wonderful honor to receive. And I was amongst some really good company. So makes me feel good.
Didn't you get an award too?
No, this, this is for the historical society. They kept telling me I was getting the award, but it's for the society. And, and we're going to leave it at that. I was also, a number of months ago, asked to be a speaker for the Seaside Museum. They have a monthly get-together at the Seaside Brewery that they call History and Hops. And I had procrastinated and all of the work that needed to go into making that presentation ended up getting done in the past couple of weeks. And so there's another area where I've just been busy, busy, busy. But that was last Thursday and it seemed to be very nicely received. And since I've had a hard time finding programs for NVAHS to present in these winter months, I'm thinking that we might do the presentation that I did here in town so that everybody can see that. It's all our local history. Always go down on Saturdays and make sure that my docent opened the museum. And usually that means I get involved and I sit in docent on Saturdays too. We had a board meeting. We've had committee meetings. And so I've taken on all of those things as well as going to Vancouver twice because last Monday, my wife had knee replacement surgery. And if you ever want to know what a great community that you're in, but, you know, have somebody in, in your family go down and watch everybody come to the door with their coverware and, and voice their support and wish your, your, your loved one a speedy recovery. It's just a wonderful outpouring of support and it makes me so happy that I live in Manzanita. And then I just, you know, as soon as I got a city email address, I started getting emails from people saying, thank you for doing this. And, you know, whatever, whatever kind of support I can give to you. I've had a couple of city managers, previous city managers reach out to me and ask me if I needed anything else. And then one of the really cool things, you know, just people on the street coming up to me and telling me congratulations. One of the things they really loved about last month's meeting was our interviews. And they told me that the way that Connie Burton and I got along in front of the group really was heartening because there wasn't any rank or there wasn't any competitiveness to it. It was both of us just trying to communicate to council that we wanted to come and we wanted to help. And I, I thank you, Connie, for, for being that way with me. So it's been a great first month. I'm hoping that things will calm down a little bit as we, as a. But, uh, thank you for giving me this opportunity to say all those things.
You're welcome. Thank you, Tom. Um, I'll be brief. The, the thing I would like to highlight and I'll probably be doing it every month for now and the next year is the comprehensive plan. So we received three very strong proposals from vendors, all very interested, all who might not normally work with a town of our size, but are here because they like the look of what they see and they like the look of what they might want to be involved with. Um, and it will reflect well upon them, all of them, I think. So we've got, uh, a plan underway. John Collier, uh, who represents the Planning Commission on this, I'm representing council and Leila are the three people on point for this. So we had a great discussion, uh, getting ready for interviews for all those people who very much would like that business from us. And we've received some very strong applications for the, uh, Citizen Advisory Committee as well for that. So I think interview requests have actually gone out for that. I think we've got space for a few more people, but we'll do the interviews, see where we're at, see what the composition of the team and the group look like, and then we'll take it there. So if you, if you are still considering or would like to know more about participating in that committee, I'm sure John Collier, myself and Leila, any of the three of us would be very happy to talk with you about that and looking forward to good things with that project when we get going later this April. Okay. And then also just, yes.
About that, um, committee, uh, just to remind everybody, it is not specifically to people who live in Manzanita. So we're looking for business owners, second home owners, a good mix of people that are involved with the city. But you don't have to be a full-time resident in Manzanita to be part of that.
That's a very nice ad. Thank you, Brad. Appreciate that. Yes, all those things are true, what you just said. Yes. Okay, good.
If I could just quickly add to that is the application is still up on the city's website. So if you're out there and you're interested, um, throw your hat in the ring.
Okay. All right. So we're ready to move on to new business. First item is the City Hall Town Hall. So we had a meeting last week, a virtual meeting, um, and it was pretty darn good. Uh, it was an hour and a half. The recording of it is up on the city's website to view. Uh, Leila's going to share some highlights with us, but I just steal a little thunder and say, we had a hundred people on that session, which I'm very, very glad for. And we got the chance to answer some questions directly and clearly with people as they ask their question, which is always a great thing. So Leila, what, what do you want to tell us about that meeting?
I think you've hit the majority of it. Um, I would just invite folks, if you didn't, um, participate and you're interested in learning more about the project and the details, to, 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 to watch that video. Um, and for folks, it's on our website, our main page, if you scroll down, there's a little button. It says City Hall Project. You click on that and it actually got, it has the kind of history of the project, um, there. So you could kind of look back at all the old town halls if you want, whatnot. Um, I just, yeah, I want to acknowledge that we had a hundred and six people at Scramptown Point, which is extraordinary. Um, we got some really, you know, good questions from community members. I think the, uh, we had the entire design team and our, uh, construction, uh, manager there. And, um, we were just able to really kind of provide a real in-depth history of how we've gotten to where we are, um, some of the challenges that we faced, how we addressed those challenges. Really gave us an opportunity to connect, um, the public outreach that was done and how that sort of fostered itself through policy that then fostered itself into implementation. And so, um, it felt like a real great coming together of the community and our ability to really show, um, how we went through this really thoughtful, intense and deliberative process um, to bring you, uh, what I hope will happen tonight. Um, a beautiful, functional, um, building that really I think we hit the mark on all of it. And that was a big testament to the folks in our community that participated, spent the time with us, came to those meetings, that provided that input, both constructive and critical. Um, and I think the directions for the this council and the previous councils, um, it really just kind of all added up. And so, um, yeah, I couldn't have been more happy with the outcome in, in that. So.
Thank you. And I think the other thing that was good, if you do have some time to spend on it, um, you start to see a little bit more and you'll be seeing more going forward, but you're starting to see a little bit more about the people who are working on this. And the, the professionalism, the, the care they're putting into it, the thoughtfulness that shows up when you ask questions and get thoughtful answers, but just, just a very high level of preparation and work that's gone into it. And, and as we know, I mean, it's, it will be a building, but the building is only there because of the people who were part of the creation process. So you'll, you'll be seeing more of those folks, um, in our meetings going forward as we get deeper into the next stages of the project. Which brings me to items B and C on, uh, on the City Town Hall. So I'm going to, I'm going to read this because I want to make very sure I get the language correct. Okay. So bear with my, there's no whereas's in this though. This is just more regular kind of language. So the next item on the agenda is the Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment, fondly referred to as the G M P, the Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment to Cove Built LLC Construction Manager slash General Contractor, contract for the purpose of constructing a city hall. We're joined here this evening by Jason Stegner, who's stepping right up to the table, who is the owner of Cove Built LLC. We also have Jesse Steiger. I just realized I've never said Jesse's name out loud. Is that right, Jesse? Is it Steiger? Okay, great. Thank you. Jesse Steiger, the city's owner representative, who will, along with our city manager, present the growth, the G M P. This item is combined with item six C related to expenditure authority for the city manager as he relates to the construction of city hall. With that, Leila, can you please provide an overview of the staff report and the action requested of council tonight?
It would be my pleasure. Okay. Thank you for that introduction and, uh, thank you, Jason, for being here in person. For Jesse, for being here tonight to help us through this. This is, uh, I think one of those moments, um, in life and in a project where you realize like, it's just, it's a milestone moment and I hope that this, you know, I'll try not to get choked up. It's been three years, two, three years of extremely hard work. Um, extreme dedication from a number of people, the councils, um, again, with the community that's been involved in this and then our project team. Uh, we've been working together really closely over the last two years. And this is a project that's thirty years in the making and we're here. So I just want to acknowledge that. I think we worked so hard on things and things take a long time. And then by the time you get to the end of it, you're like, all right, let's go. But I do want to take some time tonight to really honor and, um, you know, respect the amount of work and effort and thought that's gone into this process and that we're, we're getting to where we've hoped to be for almost thirty years. So. I didn't mean for that to be all fancy. So just a quick overview, I'm going to spend some time. So if you went to the town hall, you might want to take a little snoozer here, but, uh, I do think, you know, you'll hear me say this time and again, when you get to the end, you always need to go back to the beginning to remind people where we started. So that we know that when we do major public works projects like this, and this is a major public works projects for our city, um, it's built on a foundation of many shoulders, right? So thirty years of shoulders, really the last, I think concerted effort has really been in the last ten years. So there's been multiple councils. Um, there was a city manager here before I was Cynthia Alamillo, as well as, um, Jerry Taylor, who played integral roles that got us to where we are today. I was fortunate enough to be hired to, to bring this project over the finish line and that's kind of where we're at tonight. Um, so I just want to acknowledge that the importance of going backwards, to go forwards is to recognize just how much time, effort and, um, thought has gone into this and care and to acknowledge the people who participated throughout that process. And then I'll hand it over to Jess, who will talk us through the Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment, uh, just in the packet, if you want to read through that. And then I'll provide a brief overview of where we are with the funding sources as I, as I promised. Um, so we understand kind of what we've paid for, what grants we've received, what I anticipate we need to take out in debt to finish the project and then, um, define all of our funding sources for the project. And then, um, we'll talk a little bit about next steps.
Great.
So just again, going back in time, we really started the City Hall Fund. It was established in nineteen ninety-five. Uh, there were some small, um, incidental funding mechanisms put in place that created that fund. Um, there were some efforts made during the timeframe between ninety-five and twenty seventeen, uh, looking at different options, but nothing really rose to the level of, um, change until twenty seventeen, when the city intentionally and, uh, purchased the Underhill Plaza site, which is the site, two-point-six-seven acre site, um, on Manzanita and Division. And once that was acquired, then we had a place to go. And this is an important site and I'll talk a little bit about that later because of its location. And, um, I think it's becoming a real sort of central heart point for our community. Uh, there was a Public Facilities Advisory Committee that was formed and a report that they developed. So they looked at all the city's properties, evaluated those properties. Their main focus was looking at what are the options on city or city hall on Underhill Plaza. A series of recommendations came out of that. Um, the city proceeded with a bond measure to fund one of those, um, item, one of those ideas, uh, that bond measure failed. And the city went back to the drawing board and started exactly where I think they should have, which was let's talk to people and let's, let's figure out what went wrong and how we can make this right. Uh, the city passed Resolution twenty-twenty-one and set the parameters for what this project will be. And as I've mentioned before, um, this isn't my idea. I don't build city halls. I am directed to build city halls. And that direction comes from policy. That policy is embodied in resolutions. And so the Resolution twenty-twenty-one indicated we wanted in the facility that it is essential, that we have to have this facility, that we want to consolidate, um, police, administration, planning, all those services into one space, that the location would be Underhill Plaza, that it would be a new building, that the city would do additional community outreach, um, and again, in the wake of the, the bond, um, that we would hire a project manager. Hello, Jesse. Um, and that we would come up with a funding strategy. And the reason why you see check marks here is because we did all that. So we, we accomplished all of that. Um, my, my predecessor did some of that and then I carried the rest of it forward, um, when I was hired. Uh, the Manzanita listens process, which Council President Kozlowski led, was a in-depth process, working with our community to say, okay, what do we want? What do we, how do we, how do we get this thing back on track? And it was a very, um, robust, uh, community process that I think resulted in a lot of really good information and feedback. And from that, um, we landed on, and when I say we, it's the collective we.
Yeah.
Right? So it's us, it's all of us. It's the people who are here before us and the people who are not here in the room. Um, but we landed on a series of, um, things that we wanted to achieve with this building. So a building that had longevity, that was scalable, that was resilient, sustainable. There was consistency and value and functionality. And so we evaluated the several options, really, um, fancy building, a modular building, and then kind of something that's just nice and in between. And that's really where we landed because cost was something that was very important to, uh, community members. And so that got embodied into another resolution, Resolution twenty-one oh-three. Uh, I think we passed this in June, my first, uh, year here, and incorporated all of that feedback into that. And so those documents end up being sort of the, the guiding light for me as the person who's responsible for implementing that, um, that policy. And that's what I started with when I began the work on this project, um, with the team that we have now. So I established a team, hired project manager, we hired an architect, we hired a contractor and, um, we began working really hard and we did public outreach. It's the first step of our process. Um, and the public outreach in this phase, uh, was more focused on what is actually the building going to be? The Manzanita listens was what do we want? What is, you know, so if you kind of think of it more theoretical and then what's the practical application of that? And so that's what our focus was when we did the public outreach that we did. I also want to just remind folks that we intentionally divided this up into two phases. Um, we had to get a lot more information to get a real clearer understanding of what the costs would be. And so we set this up in two phases in a way to protect the city. Should we have gotten to the end of phase one and decided that, and determined that based on what the cost estimate was, that it was something that was out of reach for us, we could cut ties and move on. And that didn't happen because we, working with our design team, were able to design a building that we felt that we could afford. And so city council, uh, through resolution authorized us to move into phase two and complete the design of the building, uh, move forward with abatement and demolition and the last step here today, which is, uh, construction. So again, just the public outreach, we really focused on building design. We held a number. Is it something you said? I should mute it now? Okay. We, uh, we have a website set up. We have all the information on that site. We held multiple town halls. We did additional due diligence again, just to remind folks, we've been down this path before. Underhill Plaza is the place that we want to be because it is the safest place in our city. And that is our largest, um, our largest evacuation zone. And it's the best place, uh, for the city to be able to serve our community. We looked at different options. Um, we ended up landing on a real consolidated option where we tried to really focus the building, um, on Manzanita and Classic Street. And, uh, then the idea like, well, how about revive, you know, revitalizing the Quonset Hut? So we took another look at that, did some additional due diligence on that as well. And the city council determined that, um, uh, sorry, I keep flipping words, uh, voted unanimously to demolish the Quonset Hut and the schoolhouse to proceed with that first option, um, largely because the cost to salvage and use that building were just really beyond, um, what we could afford at that time. And then we began really aggressive discussions, aggressive, not in a negative way, but in an intensive way, discussing the financial strategy, really trying to understand. We knew kind of, we had a good confidence in the number that we had from the schematic design cost estimate. And you'll see, we were, we're, we're pretty good relative to that first estimate. Um, but we did a real deep dive into our finances. Um, we did a financial forecast. We just did a ton of work around the, um, finances. And then we came back with our cost estimate for, um, design, um, for design development. Was that in April? No, that's schematic design. We had another, uh, financial strategy discussion and then we had a final community meeting where we presented the concept that we were going to move forward with in design development. And then we kind of paused as we went through the budget process. And the budget process is obviously tied into this potential expenditure. Um, held multiple work sessions and then ultimately the city council authorized me to move forward with applying for a loan from the state of Oregon for special public works funding, um, which I did in June. And then that began the process of a design development phase. Um, that contract with the Special Public Works Fund was approved in October and then executed in December. And then we held, you know, other work sessions throughout twenty-twenty-three. I think at one point, I think there was no less than eighteen items in one year on, on just this topic alone. So we did everything in phase one. And the process from schematic design to design development, um, was really getting a lot more detail into the ground. We did additional geotechnical work. We did additional analysis on hazardous materials. We got clearance from the State Historic Preservation Office to demolish the buildings. We completed, uh, the design development stat, set, um, Jason and. We completed uh the design development stat set. Um Jason and his team conducted pricing of that set in October. Um we had to work on some revisions, which we call value engineering um to get us within our target budget. And then we brought to council an updated budget estimate. Um and I'm sorry, that should say six million nine thousand three hundred and forty. I should change that. So that's a typo on my end. Um. So we presented that to city council. Um and council approved uh an early work amendment for the demolition and abatement. And they also approved dedicating the COVID funding that we received um for this. To support the emergency operations center, and that helped close that gap between the original schematic design estimate. And the uh design development estimate. So from design development to construction documents, uh we had to go through a lot of steps here as well. We got land use approval in December. Um the design team worked furiously to get construction documents to Jason on the twenty sixth of January. I think Jay posted them on the twenty sixth of January, same day. Uh and then we received bids back um from that. And then um we, we've been working together really up until Friday of last week to get all those. Details, the documents, all of that stuff dialed in. And so that's what's before even the packet today. Um in February, you approved a supplemental budget, uh because we do have a signed contract with the state of Oregon so that we can receive those funds. Um and start to um, start to uh move forward with that process. We received the updated cost estimate, which is really pretty much last week. Worked through that, updated the GMP, got everything all together. And so tonight, what we're asking for is council's approval of that GMP. So that's it. We checked this box, and then the last box is construction. I like, I do this because I have such a big list and I could check stuff off. Um and just again, I like to kind of go back to timelines that you're hopefully familiar with. But uh when we met in February, I gave you an updated financial forecast. And um, you know, to get and to pass supplemental budget. Um and tonight, what um we will bring for you is the GMP itself and then an updated funding approach. Uh so with that, I'm going to hand it over to Jessie, and she's going to kind of walk us through. Uh what is a GMP and then what is our GMP?
Great. Thanks, Leila. Um hello, everybody. Nice to see you again. Uh I'm Jessie Steiger. I'm a project manager with the Clash Group. I've been on this project for about twenty months, I calculated, plus or minus. And um and my role is to really like overall project management and advise the city. Do all of the contracting um and just kind of really usher this process through um. So that we can be here today, really. Um and then you'll be in your building here pretty quickly um after all of this. So um uh what is a GMP? We love our acronyms in this business because it makes us feel smart. And um for no reasons at all, but we tend to swap out uh guaranteed maximum price and gross maximum price. Um just to help confuse people even more. Um but what it is, is that basically this is um after Jason has bid out the project, he understands where the costs are. Um he's accounted for some of the things that, information he may not even had in the drawings. But it's a, it's a fixed price for constructing this facility and turning it over a, a fully functioning building. So um lots of it was competitively bid. Um some of it, we only received one bid on, but it was actually put out to bid. Um and it also includes an amount for some contingency, which I'm going to talk out um separately. And that's about it. It's basically your gross contract price. So it includes um uh Jason spent some time with us um during pre-construction. If you recall, he came on board at the time of our, I believe, our third town hall meeting. Um and then we also did an early work amendment to uh demolish and do perform abatement on the school and the plaza hut. And again, those portions are complete. And so we're kind of authorizing really the next increase in his contract, which is to cover the remaining amount of construction. So I want to talk to you about what that means. Because um change orders do come up on a project, but I want to talk about what's going to actually change the GMP and what won't. So for the most part, this is a, a, a fixed price for the whole facility. Um but the owner, i.e. the city, like there is still some risk um that Jason simply doesn't have the information for. To bid. And so these are all very normal things. Um uh we could dig into the ground and find an old abandoned oil tank that nobody knew about. That's not Jason's fault, and that would be a, a reason to increase the GMP and to compensate him fairly for taking care of a problem that nobody knew about. Um soil conditions um sometimes aren't what we expect. And fr- frankly, getting into the dirt and the, the soil conditions is usually one of the biggest risks the city still has. But we carry outside of Jason's contract, a kind of bucket of contingency for your use um in case these things come up. Um also, sometimes there's permit and code changes that come up. Again, Jason can't predict what those are going to be. So if those happen, that is a cost the owner would uh absorb. And then also, sometimes you guys realize you might need to make some changes during the course of the project that. You didn't either understand while it was being designed, or maybe you've just changed your mind because how you need to operate your business has changed. Um and so there will be some changes during the course of construction, and those would come out of the owner's contingency. Um also, a, a GMP can decrease. Um sometimes we find some savings. Uh just for example, the demo and abatement phase, the original contract amount for that was uh three hundred and nineteen thousand and change. Um and it included a little bit of contingency in case we uh found additional hazardous materials that were concealed in a wall. Um and then Jason also puts together an estimate for what some of his um costs are for managing the project. Um but we didn't run into any issues in abatement. And so at the end, Jason was able to give back from that three hundred and nineteen thousand. I believe the final result was two ninety seven. So we got back, you know, twenty two, twenty three thousand dollars. So that's also part of this. This is a fully transparent and open book process. Um and that's, to me, one of the things I really love about having a GMP. And having a CMGC is that it's an open process as opposed to like a, a low bid environment. Where it can be a lot more, it's closed book and can be a lot more contentious. Um I think that's okay on this slide. Now, there is a contra- so it's either called contractor contingency or construction contingency. Um it's about five percent of the construction costs. This is included within the GMP. Um this amount is a hundred and eighty six thousand dollars. And this amount is really for Jason to um be nimble on the job and allow him some flexibility. Um to make some changes, to maybe improve safety conditions. Or maybe there's a windstorm and his erosion control fencing gets knocked down and he needs to buy some more. Um it allows him to uh run a few trades on overtime if he's a little bit behind on schedule. So it gives him a little bit of flexibility just to um get the job done in the way he needs to. Um again, this is an open book process. And so um there will be a log that we review um regularly, uh you know, at least monthly together. Um so we're aware of all the costs. There's still checks and balances on all these costs that are spent out of construction contingency. And the contract defines what are allowable things that you're able to spend it on. Um and then again, if we get to the end of the project and maybe Jason's only needed to use eighty six thousand of that. A hundred thousand of that goes right back to you and you've never spent it. Um so it's a good process. It allows for flexibility. And um again, it's, it's collaborative and open book. And likewise, I want to just keep uh touching on checks and balances because it's important. This is a public works process. Um so really, all project costs, which is pay applications, um any change orders. So either construction contingency change orders or some of the owner contingencies, like if they have poor soil conditions or changes in scope. They're reviewed by the architect to make sure they're fair, to make sure that it's not something that's already included in the design. It's reviewed by me to be sure, to ensure that it's in compliance with the contract and that the costs seem fair and reasonable for that, the work that's included. Um and then Leila will also be signing off on all of them. So we've got three levels of checks and balances really for any sort of um money changes. During the course of this project. Um uh duh, 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 like, and then also, um so we've got a cost and schedule issues. That this is something that we discuss at weekly team meetings where we often kind of give informal direction. Uh maybe Jason's got a problem on site and we say, yes, please do this. Um and then sometimes like the official documentation might take a week or so to follow up. Um but these are things we talk about regularly. They're tracked in meeting minutes. Um and so it's all above board. Oh, this is a fun and busy slide. So if you've been with us for the long haul. This, the sl- the information in the slide was introduced back in the second town hall meeting. And at that time, this graphic, it didn't have any numbers in it. It was all just very generic describing. What are the different pieces of a uh total project budget? So um I'm going to run through these a little bit quickly because I think most people have seen this a couple of times, and I'm happy to um expand on anything. So the, the first column, we call hard construction costs. What that really means is that's all of the money it takes. From all of the subcontractor bids to actually build the building. And that's at the time it was estimated. So you can see from, on the, the date on the top that this uh, this budget is from uh last March. At that time, um we also had to include some escalation. You have to project forward. Um what the um effective inflation is going to be on the construction costs you've esco- um um estimated. Um and then the next column, uh we decided we didn't need a design contingency. I don't think that matters for this discussion, to be honest. Um so I'm going to skip over that piece. Um then the third column, you can see we've got the hard construction costs. Then there's construction contingency, which we talked about um previously. And then all of that together, um in this slide, last March, was three point seven million for the GMP. On top of the construction contract, which is obviously the, the bulk of your project budget. Um we have a whole bucket of other costs, which we call soft costs. Um and that includes base, every other project cost that we have. It includes my time. It includes all of the design fees, geotechnical engineering, testing and inspections, permit fees, insurance, furniture. Um IT equipment, everything else you need to make this a functional building. Um and so when you add those up, you've got kind of a subtotal of about five million dollars in direct project costs. And then we always carry a separate bucket of your owner contingency, and that allows us to be flexible and nimble and kind of uh. Redistribute funds in the project as needed as we learn new information. And so last year at this time, our total project budget was just about five point eight million dollars. And you'll see, we've got a couple more success uh of, of these graphs that both project budgets and how things are distributed. Are going to fluctuate over time. So then in November, um you can see now our total project budget is six million because we're able to find some additional funding. To add into the project budget. Um. I don't know that there's too much more to say about this phase. Um Leila, the, the other thing that changed, one of the um. We previously had the demolition and abatement budgeted in the soft costs. But then we were like, oh, you know what? Jason's going to perform this work, so it got moved into construction. So it looked like kind of a big change um from one estimate to another, but really it's just redistributing. How, uh where we bucketed that, th- those budget numbers. And then I think there's one more of these. Budget slides. There we go. This is where we stand today. This is uh what we're looking at in the GMP. So you can see the hard co- the column on the left is the hard costs. It's four point one million dollars is really um. The uh is all of the subcontractor bids plus all of Jason's direct costs for his company to build this facility. And there was pre- previously the three hundred thousand of abatement and then some pre-construction fees. Um and then there's also a hundred and eighty five thou- on the next column, a hundred and eighty five thousand in construction contingency. Which takes you to the total amount of the GMP, um which will be asking for approval today of four million five hundred eighty nine thousand nine forty four. Um we also have one point one million of soft costs. And we have reduced the owner's contingency um down to three hundred and twenty five thousand. That's about um seven and a half percent uh uh owner contingency on the construction cost. That's a really healthy amount to have coming into construction. And that allowed us to kind of like balance out the budget and give you the facility that we've shown you. Next slide. Um another, another fun term that's part of the GMP amendment is called substantial completion. And what that means is we're setting a date that Jason is uh need, needs to complete this facility by. Um and that date is May sixteenth, twenty twenty five. Um we have, what that means is that the building is complete enough that it can be usable. Um all of the um permits have been signed off by the jurisdictions. We have a temporary certificate of occupancy. And we've been able to develop a punch list for the project, which means we, we basically go through the building. And we put tape on walls to say, hey, this, this paint needs some touch up. Or maybe Jason's got a little bit of landscaping to finish up. Like there's usually um a handful of things that need to be finished up. And we all collectively agree, the project is done enough and we can start using it. And so you will still see Jason around even while you're moving in and while you're setting up to use this. Because there's always little things to fidget with and fix and um and address. Um but it's uh complete enough that you could start using the building. Um we've uh included fifteen uh weather days um in the contract, which means. We've got three weeks worth to adjust to heavy rain and high winds and ice storms and, you know, smoke. All these things without needing to push that completion date out from May. Um so if we end up not needing all those three weeks, it is possible um that we could even finish a little bit early. Um that's kind of a knock on one moment. I regret saying that out loud. You never predict that in construction. But it, it allows us to be nimble um and adjust and also to meet everybody's expectations. Um so it's, it's a really smart thing to have um in, in the contract.
Okay, um and I'll ask near, do you want me to finish? And then if you have questions again, okay.
You finish, I'm going to take us quickly through the next steps of comments and questions, and then we'll, we'll go for.
You can ask us questions and yeah.
Thank you.
So in terms of the funding strategy, um I wanted to provide sort of a overview of where we are right now. So if you look at the total project budget um that Jessie just described. Um we've spent to date eight hundred and twenty six thousand two hundred and fifty eight dollars. So those are dollars that are already out the door that were budgeted for, and this is over the last uh several years. So the total remaining funds required to complete the project is five point two million dollars. Um I'm estimating that the remaining fund balance for this current fiscal year, and you can check it out in our financial reports. What's left is about two hundred and sixty five thousand uh dollars that was allocated over through the budget process this year from the general fund. And then we've also received uh two hundred and eighty two thousand dollars in total grants. So if we take that out of what's remaining in terms of what we need, uh because we have those things in hand or they're committed to us. Uh the total remaining funds required is four point seven million dollars. Um I'm recommending a total financing package of four point one, which is the same as what I described at the last time we talked about a cost estimate. And then um propose, and I believe I received concurrence from the council to move the six hundred. Uh thirty eight thousand dollars from the sale of old city hall into um the um. city hall fund. And so with that, we have the money. So by author, if you authorize the GMP tonight, I'm gonna make this commitment here and do it so publicly. We do have access to over five million dollars, right? So if for some reason we need it, it's there. But what I committed to this council is that I will tell you a number that I think that we can hit. And if for any reason that needs to change, I believe that needs to be a council approval.
Yes.
And so one of the things that we will do throughout the construction project is provide regular updates. And that will also include regular updates as to where we are in terms of expenditures, and where your council has that information. And you're aware and um I don't anticipate that that's gonna be something that we need to do, but I just wanted to make sure that you and the community know, um, I feel like I signed this, I'm authorized to take out four point one million dollars and not a penny more. And if I need to, I will come back. Um, but you will be well aware of that if that needs to happen. And although again, I'm gonna knock on wood, I don't anticipate that that's gonna be the case. And, and I do want to acknowledge, uh, in large part, I think um that comes from the very uh judicious approach to our budgeting that I want to credit Jesse with. Um, in terms of making sure that we always had a solid uh contingency. I think her knowledge and experience in doing projects like this, when I saw that first number for um contingency, I was a little blown away, but she, she talked me into it or talked me down from the wall and um, she was totally right and totally on point and it was absolutely the right way to go. So it's really um a testament, I think, to the, to the knowledge base of our team. Um, and um that I feel just utterly confident in what, what you're seeing today. Um, so what we're asking tonight, you'll have time to deliberate and so forth, but is to approve a resolution that approves a guaranteed maximum price amendment for the purpose of constructing a new city hall. Um, and to authorize a city manager to execute certain contracts related to the construction of new city hall. And so this is item C. I'll touch on that real briefly. Uh, council gave me direction last month to explore the idea of doing um either a resolution or providing the authority for signing contracts specific to this project. And so I consulted with the city attorney and then they helped draft the resolution that's before you tonight. And there is a recital in there that provides that authorization to me up to a hundred thousand dollars. Although I don't think we have any contracts that would hit that maybe furniture. Um, so I just wanted to note that, that we kind of baked that into the GMP resolution. And so that if you approve that resolution and you're comfortable with that approach, um, that authority, then um, will be delegated to me to be able to um work with Jesse. If we end up needing to have another, you know, our special inspections, we need to get that contract. I can now just work with her. It's in the project budget, sign off on it, and it allows us to be flexible and nimble um and responsive. So because we know that time is money, so we have to be able to act quickly. So that was the city attorney's recommendation and what is in the resolution before you today. Uh, so with that, I, that's the end of our presentation. Um, we've got Jason here, Jesse, myself. We're happy to answer any questions you may have at any time.
And we'll do that. Let's just go through kind of the next couple of steps. So next step will be questions that council would have of any of the presenters or partners in the work that are here. Uh, next step, we'll open it up to public comment. So council will get the benefit of any public comment. And then we'll come back to deliberate if there's other discussion we want or need to have following the public comment. And then we'll move forward with the action. So first off then for council, are there any questions that you have got uh for Leila or Jesse or Jason?
I've got a couple of questions. So uh Jesse, um is it, is it more likely that we might see uh some savings from our contingency or Jason's? Or is it hard to predict uh on either?
I think you'll see a little bit of both, to be honest. Um, I think that's pretty common. I have not worked on a CMGC project that didn't have some savings at the end. You, you never know, but I think it's likely you'll see both.
Okay. Um, now I'm gonna ask a question that is uh a little tricky the way I'm gonna ask it, but uh I, I can understand people who might be curious. The, the team that we have, you and Chris and Jesse and, and Leila, of course, very, very collegial and it's probably served us well that you've had that collegiality and familiarity. But then you also lay out sort of the checks and balances that are built into the process that theoretically could help uh preserve some of that contingency, particularly on Jason's side. So how do you sort of balance the the obligation to be accountable through the checks and balances with the um sort of chemistry of the team, which is very friendly, very collegial? Could you sort of assure us that uh it works? You can, it can be friends and still be uh serious about the whole process that you're committed to?
Yeah, a hundred percent. Um, I, in my career, I feel like I've had great success with that, um, and that we can treat each other with respect. We can like each other. We can grab a beer after work. But if you're proposing something that doesn't make logical sense and the math doesn't pencil out, we're gonna keep talking about it. You know, you can operate from a position of respect and likability and hold people accountable. And I believe we've been doing that as a team together. Um, you know, we, this uh, it wasn't an easy design. It was, um, we, if the budget was challenging, we really had to dig in um and dive deep together. And we've already been doing that in a friendly manner, um, from a place of respect. And so I have complete confidence in being able to work with Jason on that um and the architect. It's uh, to me, this is totally an achievable goal that we can get through this project. Like, it's always my goal to get through a project and still like everybody I've been working with. And I think that's an important aspect to have because when things are tough, to be able to sit across from the table with somebody you trust and have tough conversations is loads easier and way more productive and way better in the end than if you're sitting with people where you've just been like battling each other the whole time. Like, that's not a healthy way to solve problems. Um, so I feel, I have a lot of confidence in that. That is not something that would doesn't pretend, it doesn't worry me at all. It may worry other people.
My only other question is, other than potential savings in either contingency bucket, are there any other paths towards a project like this, including the under budget?
Um, there's, you know, the, the budget of the soft costs. Um, there's several things where we've, we've taken a shot at budgeting it and we try to be a little bit conservative so that it's not a surprise when it comes in. Um, but there's some information we don't have yet, um, from like utility companies and such like that. So I do think there's like some little savings kind of here and there that could be sprinkled throughout the budget that aren't in the contingency pots. Um, is it loads of money? Not really, you know, but could you get fifty grand back out of some of the things within the budget? I think that's feasible.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have a, I have a question. Um, I had a chance to talk with Jason before the meeting, but I, I think it's important to talk about it uh here. So I went over all of the bids and you, every bid you selected was low bid. But there were several that the low bid was significantly lower than the other bids, which leads me to be concerned about the quality of the low bid. I, we, you know, we we wanna go low, but we also want a building where the roof doesn't leak and, and where it stands up for fifty years. So could you respond particularly?
I have the same concerns. We uh, we got a lot of bids. Many were local and known bidders uh built. Ten years of working with most of those people locally that that has instilled me with trust and competence that uh we'll get there with those subs. There were a couple in particular, no names, but uh those that were much lower, we called them. We went through all the scope items with them. We got references from them and we called those references to make sure that we weren't selecting a subcontractor that I had no feel for at all. In that process, we gained confidence that these were the right people. I do believe there's always risk. Uh, that's partly why we carry contingency. Uh, we could have taken a higher bidder, the budget would have gone up with it. Ultimately, we're trying to give the city the best value and known value from the beginning, but I, 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 I view those things as shared risk. We're trying to do our best to qualify the people that are gonna do the work on this. You can only trust so much. The proof is out there when the roof goes on. And uh it, it is my job to try to hold them accountable as well, right? So as we're going through this, if they start throwing stuff at me, I'm gonna, I'm gonna play tough contractor with them and make sure we get the best value. It's a, it's a magic blend of, of working with them, making sure that all the scope is covered. But I feel confident in the numbers that I put forward. I, it's, it's a, it's a big moment through the GMP process to get a multitude of bids and go through all of them and see that low number and go, man, this doesn't feel right. And it was my first instinct. And that's why we go deep and, and, and try to understand who we're working with. And um in that process, I feel like we gained confidence.
I appreciate your due diligence and follow up on that. And um low, low is good as long as it's quality.
Hundred percent agreed.
Thank you.
The question.
I have one question. Um, and this is for you, Leila. Um, I've had one community member in particular that's uh been asking me a lot of questions about debt service. Um, and um and of course, you know, there's, and there's still a lot of people in the community that want to go back all over the thing about having an opportunity to vote about it. Um, but we're not there anymore. Um, so um anyways, I think what we're talking about is a really great way of, of getting into this and being able to use the uh special public works funding. Um, but I'm not clear that I understand. You, we, we don't take all the money all at once, so we don't have the uh, the debt service of an entire four point one million right off the bat. And so we save on that. But I haven't really gotten a feel for what the effective rate is that we're gonna be paying on what we do borrow.
Okay, so good question. So just as a reminder to folks, the way the special public works fund loan works, and this is why council directed me to take this um approach, is that we do it on a reimbursement basis. So Jason submits an invoice, we pay Jason, we submit that to the state, we get reimbursed for that. We start paying interest on that portion of the funding right away. And then interest right now in our contract is two percent. So we start to accumulate interest as we're borrowing money. When we get to the last bill from Jason and the project is complete, we've hit substantial completion, we will then begin another process with the state. So we're paying two percent as we draw money. So over the construction timeframe, which is different than us securing, say, four point one million dollar full faith and credit loan, we have to take all that money out at once, plunk it into a bank account, and then we're paying debt service and interest on that immediately. So that's a positive aspect of the special public works fund. Once we've hit substantial completion and the project is done and we've made our last payment, then we will work with the state to convert that loan into a permanent debt. And that permanent debt will be set at the interest rate at the time the debt is sold to the Oregon Bond Bank.
There we go.
So there's a little bit of risk there, but based on the way interest rates are trending, you know, I'm not gonna say anything else because we've had enough wood to knock on today. I, but that puts us in a pretty excellent position.
Thank you.
So then if we only end up borrowing three point nine six million, that's what we, we pay debt on.
At a really good rate, better than general market rate.
We're certainly hoping so, but.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, I'd like to turn it to uh public comment. Uh, so Nancy, do we have anyone in the room who signed up for public comment on this part of the agenda?
Yeah.
Okay, well, let's go to the let's go to Zoom land and YouTube land and see if we have anybody who would like to weigh in.
I'm giving it a moment.
Yes, yes, that's always good.
No, no hands.
Okay, so do we need further deliberation from council? Do we want further? I asked if anybody had signed up to comment on it. Is anybody here want to comment who did not sign up previously? Thanks. Okay, all right. Thank you, Linda. Always got my back. Thank you. Uh, so we move to deliberations. I'd say just to preface, we've all been at this for a while. Observing and learning for as members of the community as well as for some of us, the, the time on council. So I don't have any particular questions. I am a supporter of this project. I'm pleased with how we've gotten to this point. I'm pleased with the, the work that's gone into this. Uh, I like sitting across the table face to face. Jason, I'm glad you're here for that part of it. Um, and I think we're, I think we're ready to vote. I'm ready to vote, but I just want to make sure if anybody has anything else they want to say about this, they have a chance to do it before we take the vote.
Well, I, I'd just like to say something. Um, this, this really has been a torturous journey. We've been working on this forever and uh I can't be more proud of where we are now. Because, and I, and Leila, Lila. Knows this really well. I mean, we worked really hard to reach out to the community and get input in Man's Any Listens. And then we had additional, really significant additional, along with surveys and, I mean, it was, it was intense. Um, what Leila has done in terms of this presentation is uh just incredible. I mean, it gives us the solid foundation that we needed for years to get complete or to get as, as firm a decision and as much as possible, the support of the community that we have. I think we have a great team, knowledgeable team. I think working together is good. Uh, I think they've come up with a miracle to get us to this level. And um, I mean, I'm, this is, this is something that we worked on for a long time. And I am just really pleased that we are where we are. And I just want to thank everyone for, for this. This is, this is big. This is really big.
So that's a no from you.
That's a no.
Thank you, Councilor Spagnu. Okay, so um, are we ready then? I'd, I'd like to go ahead and uh I'll read the motion, um, so everybody hears it out loud and then I'll ask uh for a counselor to take us to the next steps. So I'm asking for a move to approve the resolution. Approving a guaranteed maximum price amendment Cove Build LLC GMGC contract, authorizing the city manager to execute the guaranteed maximum price amendment for the purpose of constructing a new city hall and authorizing the city manager to execute certain contracts related to the construction of the new city hall. May I have a move?
So moved.
Okay, may I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, uh, I won't restate the motion. I've read it already. Let's vote on it. Uh, all in favor? Aye? Oced? Motion is passed. So Leila, is this is this time for?
Yeah, so I asked the mayor if uh she would be willing to sign the resolution right now.
Yes, I am.
And I'm gonna sign GMP. And I'm gonna ask Jason to sign the GMP.
And I'm going to ask Jason to sign the GMP. I'm going to be choked up and I'm choked up.
Me too.
It's been a lot of work.
That's smart, get his ink before he changes his mind.
Big deal. And then we got a gift for you.
Oh, delicious.
It's the building permit.
Say word.
You may, please.
Yeah, I've been witness to the hard work, day in, day out. To speak to Jerry's question, I, I think that you hired us all based on our qualifications, ethics, honesty, commitment to the city. I take that very personally. I, I understand the amount of trust, the amount of money that you're putting in our hands. I take that responsibility very seriously. Sat here, one of the first town hall meetings and said, we'll get there. We didn't. I'm very proud of that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Let's build this.
Yeah.
Let's build this sucker.
Easy part now.
Thank you, Jesse.
Thanks very much, Jesse.
Thanks, Jesse. You look great.
Okay, we've got another, even more business to conduct. And you're, feel free to shift to the side if you want to go right to the office and get to work. Feel free. Love that. Yeah, if you ever wondered what a set of those plans looks like, it's some idea. So next up, we've got the water billing discussion and a proposed amendment to ordinance. So. That was the resolution.
Okay.
Again, no, it's always good to ask, that's my experience. So the next item on the agenda is related to an update of ordinance 90.90-8 that would officially allow the city to bill on a monthly basis. So Leila, will you take us through the action requested, please?
Well, gladly. So what we're asking for tonight is to amend ordinance 98 to be updated to officially grant authority to the city to read meters and bill on a monthly basis. So it's an oversight on our part that I noted last month. And this is the action that we would need to take in order to correct that. So right now, we have ordinance 90, it tells us that we can only do 90 different reads and then billing on a quarterly basis. So we've made some minor modifications to that, to change that. And just ask council to, if you have any questions about why we moved to monthly, be happy to entertain any of those. Dan is not here tonight, but if there are any questions, he's at a conference. He's been excused. We knew he wouldn't be here, but I forgot and put him on the agenda. I crossed the bomb. I'd be glad to answer any of those. But this, what we're asking for is a first reading tonight on that ordinance amendment. We would do a second reading in, what's next month, April? And then it would go into effect 30 days later. I didn't think there was really justification for an emergency implementation for the health, safety and welfare of the community, but.
Okay.
Very clerical error on our part, so.
Okay. So, and we have received, we have received comments in advance, I know.
Yes, we did. So, yeah, the council rules, just to clarify for folks, if there's something that's on the agenda, you've sent us comment, then we do include it in packet. So we included the written comment that we did receive into the packet. And council has had a chance to review that.
Absolutely.
So we're going to take a public comment and then we'll all listen to that carefully, of course, and then we'll do some deliberation before we go to the next step. Okay, just so we know where we're at. So are there any members of the audience here, either in person or on Zoom, who wish to speak on this matter? Do we have anybody signed up in the room, Nancy? Okay. Anybody in the audience who may not have signed up? Okay, do we have anybody online who would like to speak? Want to give it your normal minute or have you already done that, Nancy? Okay.
Still nothing.
All right, so I'm going to open, pause for comment now and we'll turn it back to council for discussion.
So Leila, if Dan were here, I was going to ask him about my recollection from when we set the new rates last summer, I think it was. He talked about how we were just then, at that time, I think, moving to monthly meter readings. And honestly, as a consumer, I wasn't, I didn't know when my meter got read, when I got a quarterly bill, but it's, presumably it was being read on a quarterly basis, it was being billed on a quarterly basis. The move to monthly readings was independent of any rate charge change, wasn't it? And so it was just coincidental that we, we moved towards monthly readings at the same time we moved towards monthly billing.
Yeah, so there's a couple of things happening. Our software system is more efficient and works more effectively when you read monthly. And so that was complicating our quarterly billing process. So when council authorized the rate increase, one of the things that we discussed is the move to monthly billing at that time. So as we're raising the rate, why don't we just go ahead and move it into monthly to address some of the backend issues that we were struggling with, with the quarterly billing approach? And so it was coincidental, but it was also fortuitous that that timing worked out the way that it did.
Okay. And as I understood some of the comments, not, not, maybe one of the written comments we got, but also a prior comment from someone in the community, as I understood it, there was a thought that because you get billed extra if you go over the base amount, that a monthly billing was more likely to produce small overages in any three months. But if you had a quarterly building, building, all three of those small overages would just add up to one overage. The math gets a little funny and I'm not sure if, if that's accurate. But, but it made me think in terms of, I believe Dan told us last summer that you gotta go more than just over the line. You gotta go literally over, more than halfway over at the next unit. Can I get that right?
Yeah, so we read units based on 1,000 gallons. So if, for example, your meter reads 1, 2, 3, 4, let's say it's a five-digit number, and Dan would actually know the numbers, but I don't. But for simplicity, let's say your meter is 1, 2, 3, 4, it's a five-digit meter, whatever. And that next one is less than 1,000, we just go, we just charge you for that four, right? So if it goes to 489 after that, the decimals after that, we still just charge you for four. If you go to 1, 2, 3, 501, then you get charged the additional unit after that. So that's how, because, so we read it basically on a per thousand gallon unit cost. So you have to kind of go over 1,000 gallons to kick into the next unit. As it was explained to me.
Well, and you know, the other thing I recall, and again, from that conversation last summer, is that, you know, we, a big part of the rate change approach was to encourage conservation. And I remember specifically contributing to that conversation, suggesting that if you're trying to track your water usage, it's a lot easier to do it if you're being advised of it on a monthly basis than a quarterly basis when a quarter could mix in high season months with low season months or middle season months. That was just my personal read on it. Others, certainly in the community, I understand disagree. But I think between the logic, the common sense logic of being able to track your usage under a new billing scheme that is designed to encourage the tracking of usage, I think monthly billing's made sense then. It also made sense then because we were moving towards monthly readings. And I thought I even remember, drawn back now, a few months, but I, I, I thought I remember that our third-party biller, billing service wasn't even able to do monthly billings at one point. And, and that also was a hurdle that was cleared right around the same time. So it seemed like a confluence of things coming together that just led us, and I didn't realize what Linda told us earlier, that monthly billings is really the norm in this county. Monthly billings seem to be the norm with utility bills in general. I pay my electric bill monthly, my cell phone bill monthly, my cable TV bill monthly. And so I, you know, I respect the, the number of folks that have expressed disappointment with monthly billings, but I'm not sure we're doing anything out of the ordinary or. And, and you know, we, we have not heard, well, I, I haven't heard from more than eight or nine people, which is, not to diminish the eight or nine people, but the bill goes out to a lot of people right now. And we just haven't heard widespread concerns.
We haven't. Can I ask this kind of sticky wicket here? So in our workshop, we discussed the added cost of living that we're going to add to the, is that the right term?
Oh.
That we're going to add as we move forward. And I, and the thought occurred to me that if we decide to postpone that until next year, that this might, that in this reading, it might be good to include the time that we start the cost of living? Or is that just not part of this?
Because you, I'm not sure quite.
So I, so if, if we, if we continue, if, if the, if the ordinance says that we're going to bill monthly and that we're going to add a cost of living increases in the future.
Annually.
Annually. Would it make sense to say that if council agrees, and the council may not agree, but if council agrees that we would start the addition of the cost of living in the next year, following year? And my logic for that, or the reason that I would advocate for that, is that we had a little problem getting started. We actually didn't bill until October. We're moving into summer, which is going to, which more than likely our water will increase pretty significantly and that is going to be a learning verb as people kind of get used to it. That if we could say we're holding off on that adjustment, that, that, that may be helpful in moving this forward. So that's my question.
So I would turn around and say, that's a council decision. The, and it's an inflation adjustment.
Inflation, thank you.
Coal is like the salary version of it. An inflation adjustment for utilities is a little different, but same, same concept. So yeah, that's a council decision. So that's something that I think was the continual continuation of our discussion from last work session will be next week. And we'll defer to council's direction on that. So if council determines to not do the inflation adjustment this fiscal year, then staff will come back and recommend it for next year. And you can decide at that time.
So that's nothing that we would decide on this evening?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
That's not in the language.
That's not in your language, okay.
No, only thing, sorry, the, the ordinance allows us to adjust rates by resolution.
Okay.
So we're only adjusting the ordinance to allow us to bill on a monthly basis.
Okay, okay.
That's the only action we're asking for tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Brad, sorry.
I, I had one comment because some of the public feedback we received, people were looking for a good reason for doing this monthly billing. I have a real world example. My neighbor across the street, second homeowner, she's only in occasionally. And the last time I saw her, she said, I got my water bill and it was $400. And she's used to paying the minimum. So she knew something was wrong. Public Works came out, had a look. It was apparent there was a leak between the meter and her house, so she's responsible for it. But had she been billed on a quarterly basis, she'd be looking at a $1,200 plus bill instead of finding that there was an issue in that first month. So when she told me what had happened and we talked about the billing, she was thankful that she knew within the first month, not only from her pocket, but, but from wasting a valuable resource like water into the ground. So there's, there's a real case scenario to support the monthly billing process.
Thank you, Brad. Tom, did you have something?
Yeah, I did. Because when I applied to be on council and when I got interviewed last month, one of the things that I said was I wanted to be mindful about, you know, as I go into my older years and want to be able to continue to afford to live in the city of Manzanita. You know, I'm, I'm very mindful of rising rates. And you know, this is really off the topic of monthly billing as opposed to quarterly. But we did see that in some of the comments, in the letters that we received was that this was a, they were complaining about the rate increases. And, and, and the letters that we received, it's not a grounds law, just like Jerry noticed. But you know, you never receive letters saying, please increase my rates. Please bill me more often. I'd like to write more checks. And so it's not that we're ignoring what, you know, what people are saying to us if we vote in favor of this. It's, we also have a responsibility to the city as an institution. And we've got to do what's right, and that's protecting our own resources so that we can continue to provide water. So I think we should move forward with it.
Thank you. Okay, well, you're going to get a chance to vote here. Just a minute, do we have any other comment? All right, so I, I will read this and then ask for it. So the, the one of the motion I'm looking for is a move to approve a first reading by title only of ordinance 2401, an ordinance of the city of Manzanita amending ordinance 90-8. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
May I have a vote, please, all in favor?
Aye.
Post? Okay. We did it without Dan.
Yeah.
It was impossible.
All right. I would like to say though, we did read, I, I know every single counselor read every single letter that came in. I also heard from a number of people verbally who didn't write letters because they didn't understand at all what a concern would be. So you know, it's a balance and listening takes a lot of different forms. Some people write, some people talk to you, some people give you a call. So we are listening and we've made the decision based on what we think is the best judgment for the city. And yeah, that's where we ended up. So thank you, thanks for the work that went into that. I'm sorry we didn't catch that first time around, but the best thing to do when you make an error is to correct it, acknowledge it, correct it quickly and move on. So there we go. Okay, now we've got a couple more items. We're going to move into old business. This is an item we've been dealing with for some time now. It's our moratorium on dune grading for views. Leila, you're, you're going to take us through the staff report and findings. And then on this one, we're going to be making a motion to adopt those findings, correct? Okay.
Yeah, and I, and I think in the interest of time, I won't spend a huge amount of time on it. The staff report is very exhaustive, it goes through the whole history. So if you're interested in some of the details, please do reference that. I do want to point out the public service announcement. But one of the things I'm trying to do on the staff reports, I have been doing, I just don't know if I've acknowledged it, is there are hyperlinks in the staff reports. So if you just click on it, it'll take you to the packet and the meeting from that. So if you're like, what did they talk about? You just click on here and it'll take you. Or you just look it up online, but I think it's cool.
It is cool.
So what we're asking today is again, just extending the moratorium on dune grading. That's per Oregon revised statute 197.5204, which allows the city to extend the legal moratorium we have on view grading for a period of six months. One of the things the city has to demonstrate in terms of meeting this requirement is that we are making progress, reasonable progress to alleviate the problem, giving right, rise to the need for a moratorium. So what we've done. So what we've done since the last time that you renewed this, this is time number three. Uh, the city issued a request for proposals in 2023. We received three proposals. We have evaluated in the first round of evaluations of those proposals. We'll be hiring a, um, I'm hopeful that next month's meeting that we will be recommending a contractor for the comprehensive plan. Uh, goal 18 is what governs dune management and what governs the ability for dune grading. We have an, and currently goal 18 allows dune grading. So the moratorium gives us the legal backing to say, for now, we're not issuing any permits on that until we resolve this issue. And the way to resolve the issue is to have a conversation with our community with respect to goal 18, determine whether or not goal 18 is still relevant. Is it still reflective of the values of this community? Um, to get to the answer on that. And then we can decide what the next steps should be. But because of the public, um, um, interest in this process, it really made it clear to us that the current policy, um, is not reflective of that. And we wanted to make sure that we had everything in place and the science and the, and the whole, um, context of our beach has changed in 30 years since that was originally done. So this is the most, I think, um, appropriate way to approach it. And we have been taking steps to get there. Um, goal 18 will be, um, one of the top, uh, um, chapters of the comp plan that we will address out of the gate is my hope. So, so that's what we are, um, offering today. We met all the requirements in terms of noticing the Department of Land Conservation and Development, um, received, um, their approval to move forward. And, um, yeah, and that's, that's where we're at. So this will cover us through September. I expect that we will need to renew this moratorium until goal 18 is updated.
Yeah, so then every six months, yes.
So we'll be back in September.
Yeah, and we're still within time to continue that extension. And, and also we're in good faith moving forward with the comprehensive plan, which is really the key to this. And based on, uh, based on the amount of public interest in this and very strong feeling about it, um, that'll be a great discussion to have as far as our comprehensive planning, um, process goes, and that'll be really important. So that's good. I think that was actually one of the big pushes to say, hey, we're really, we're out of sync now with our old plan, so it's time to do something about that. So, thank you. So are, is there any discussion or question from council on this one? Okay, so I'm looking for a motion to adopt the findings as presented to extend the dune grading moratorium for view grading for a period of six months. Can I have a motion for that?
So moved.
So moved, thank you, Brad, second?
A second.
Double seconds. Linda got that one, Linda seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Moratorium continues. Um, now we're going to be talking about the dark sky ordinance and Officer Mike Sims, Sergeant Mike Sims.
Sergeant, yeah.
Approach the podium, or Mike, as we say.
Thanks, Sam.
So for people at home, Mike's been sitting over in a corner all by himself.
It's been rough. I have been that quiet for that amount of time for a while.
I think we.
You know, you know. Okay, hey, uh.
So hang on.
Hang on.
Make up to being quiet, but we, we are, we are moving along here. So for the last several months, the city's been working on creating a dark sky ordinance. And council directed staff to conduct some additional outreach. Staff in this case would be you, Mike, I think. Additional outreach specifically with La Nita businesses. So Sergeant Sims will be providing us with an overview of that additional outreach and a final draft of the dark sky ordinance for discussion and deliberation. We're not voting on this tonight. We're just making sure the language is good and any questions we've got are answered, and then we'll take it up again next month, correct?
Do my best, yeah, that's the plan.
On to you.
Okay. Hello, I'm Mike with the cities, so greetings, 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 council, president, mayor, manager. Um, yeah, so just a quick timeline, uh, to kind of bring us up in speed. If we go all the way back to 2021, um, city council amended ordinance 10-3, which is, uh, the short-term rental ordinance. Uh, they amended and added a, um, I believe an exterior lighting, uh, element to that, um, which is related to dark sky and light trespass for neighbors. Um, so at that point in time, uh, we, or city council created that, uh, that, that addition to the city ordinance that says, hey, we kind of want to monitor the light for the short-term rental. Since then, there's been conversation on making it citywide. Uh, and that brings us from 2021 to 2023. Um, in August, 2023, uh, uh, we kind of revisited the idea of bringing that citywide. City council, um, tasked the staff to move forward with, uh, what this looks like as far as the, as a, as an ordinance, uh, what this looks like with community involvement, community, um, input, uh, staff input, uh, et cetera. So from September 2023, uh, a month later, in August, uh, 2023, staff, um, presented to city council like a rough draft of what an ordinance would look like. City council then requested staff to reach out to the community with a survey. Uh, there was a survey done with a little over 200 people who, um, uh, citizens that, that participated in that. Um, moving forward from August, uh, two months to December, or three months, or, excuse me, from September to December, um, staff presented to city council the findings and some information regarding that survey that went out to the citizens. Um, in addition to, um, um, a request to also move forward and contact the businesses specifically. So in December, uh, again, we present, staff presented to, uh, city council the findings of that survey and then asked us to move forward to the business community. Uh, I went out and spoke with some businesses. I want to say nine out of nine or 10 out of 10 were all in favor of an exemption for the commercial zone on La Nita regarding a dark sky ordinance. Uh, I think that would be appropriate, uh, as well as far as, uh, their input and, and, um, and, and my opinion. Um, moving forward from that, um, I'm checking my notes here, uh, let me see. Yes, we move forward from that, which brings us to today. That's kind of a timeline. Um, since, uh, this all started, we've been coordinating with Tillamook Public Utility or Tillamook People's Utility District, um, regarding, uh, their input on, um, basically what they can do, the adjustments they can make for the city streetlights. Uh, we know that there's going to be some adjustments for some city buildings. Um, we've also coordinated with, um, uh, the city attorney. Uh, they've had to review this last, uh, most recent draft ordinance, which you've seen in the packet. Um, at that point, um, s- staff would kind of recommend, uh, uh, council, or actually ask council to think about a few things, um, as, uh, before you move forward to April. Should, uh, again, with the input from, uh, some of the businesses that I spoke with, should we have an exemption for the commercial zone? That's something that staff would ask, uh, city council to look at, uh, that exemption. Um, also a grace period. So if we were to implement a new ordinance that was citywide, uh, for dark sky and light trespass, um, at what point in time, and I would recommend roughly a year, give or take, where we, we have this ordinance adopted and then we actually start, um, not enforcing it, but start penalizing in, in case that comes up, um, the situation where, uh, somebody's not compliant after, uh, a knock and talk or, or just a kind of a heads up, uh, contact. So, um, again, just asking council to, uh, think of at least those two things, uh, in the next month. Um, we have, I believe, a copy of the draft.
It's in the packet.
It's in the packet.
Be helpful to put it up on your screen or?
I, I want to say that, that basically that draft ordinance comes down to, um, four, uh, four definitions. It comes down to, uh, five prohibitions and three exemptions. Uh, we've talked a lot about, uh, what those look like in the past. Um, going back to December and before that, uh, September, before that August. Uh, we've changed a few things, uh, given the input and, uh, additional, um, uh, opinions from, uh, well, staff and, and, excuse me, including, uh, Leila. Um, if you have that in front of you, please let me know if there's any questions. Uh, but I'd like to highlight out of the, uh, four definitions, uh, the shielded lighting, which I did not know this, but Oregon, uh, Oregon revised statue actually has their own definition. So it was very easy to, um, not have to make that up, definition of shielded lighting, which is really going to be like a bulk of or 99% of how we can gain compliance with super bright lights that come from your neighbor's houses or from the city buildings or maybe some streetlights. So, um, I would, I would, uh, ask you to really review that. Uh, we've added the O R S in this, uh, language to, uh, for you to, you know, refer to if, if need be. Um, as far as the prohibitions, I did mention that there was five of those. Uh, you've got an updated version on letter E, which is, uh, the light trespass. I believe that was, um, uh, defined, um, under the definition. So maybe there's five definitions.
Yeah, and I, I want to catch that real. I left that one off, the first draft that was in the packet, so I added it back.
Okay.
It's in the current packet, um, under section one.
And I had actually left it off originally. So bringing that back home, um, the exemptions have not changed. Um, uh, the prohibitions have not really changed. And the, that definition that I, I had mentioned regarding shielded lighting has, has been updated to reflect, uh, what's an O R S or the O R S. So questions from council?
Uh, some comments and questions that may not necessarily fall under your remit. Um, but just things I think the council needs to think about as we continue discussing this. Uh, I think one of the big parts of this is if we move forward with it, it is how to make sure the community at large is aware of this. Um, the timeline that we're going to look at for putting this in place. And Mike, I liked your idea of once it's in place, coming up with sort of a time span to say, we're going to take this amount of time to start visiting people and saying, this is not in compliance because I'm sure a lot of people, maybe even including myself, someone may come by and say, this is not in compliance, didn't know that. So we need to think about that communication process and the enforcement process. And then, um, I don't know that it needs to be in the ordinance, but if you drove by my house or enforcement and saw that I had a light out of compliance, I would expect that you would tell me, this is out of compliance. You've got this amount of time to correct it before we fine you.
I would even come over and help you so we could avoid that fine.
Okay.
That's right.
That's approach in general.
Yeah, of course. And that grace period really comes from, um, multiple conversations that I've heard, including, uh, even a conversation I had earlier this evening. So, uh, I wouldn't take credit for that grace period, but it's, it, it's, I think, just part of the process when you have an ordinance like this that we're trying to push forward.
And then I think a common sense approach as well is you're going to have people that aren't in compliance and I don't have time, I can't afford this, it's going to take me four months to get an electrician to come and do it. Let's turn it off.
We'll figure something.
I mean, that's, you know, it's, it's not a matter of we're going to come and slap you with a fine because you have to get this done in 30 days. Well, if you turn the light off, problem's fixed. Yeah, I don't think that's up to you to switch the fixture out or do something to bring it into compliance. Or you start doing it again. And I have a neighbor that leaves spotlights on 24/7 and I have resisted the urge to get on the ladder and go unscrew those bolts.
This opportunity to.
Crossed a line. Yes, go ahead.
Can I take the opportunity to direct you to the code at ci.mansanita.or.us, uh, complaint form, which is online.
Thank you.
In which we, um, have had one since December and we were able to, uh, gain compliance by moving the fixture in about four minutes. So instead of you getting on a ladder, you can always just email us and we'll figure out if you can get on the ladder.
I'll, I'll pass that the time to you. I'll be there. And one thing to mention, and I think I mentioned this a couple of council sessions ago, the streetlights, if some of those are encroaching on your property, I successfully contacted T-PAD. They came and put a shield on the streetlight by my house and turned it down a little bit. Very well. I was very happy with that response from T-PAD.
Other comments or feedback from Mike, Tom?
What's your strategy with, uh, vacation homeowners or non-res, people that aren't here?
Uh, so right now the ordinance allows us to, um, contact the owner or agency and they've got about, or make an attempt to contact them. They've got roughly 20 minutes to get back to us. Um, we can then, excuse me?
We had, you had.
I think he is mentioning.
Vacation homes, not S T R, so homeowners and second.
Okay, second homeowners. Yeah, we have no problem calling them and saying, hey, here's a list of folks that can help you become compliant. And we have that list of folks that, you know, and not that we would promote their business, but we, we, we'll help those second homeowners. I'm sorry, I didn't misunderstand the question. Thank you, Ms. Sam.
Okay, Tom, anything else?
No, that was the question.
Okay, anything from you, Linda? I support the, uh, a couple of changes you've made. I'm very grateful, um, and happy that you took our strong direction and went up and down La Nita and talked with everybody because I was concerned about that business. So, um, coming back with a commercial zone as an exemption, I would support, um, the language in this. So I think making that clear and just as importantly, having had conversations with those business owners. So they're involved and feel connected with as a part of the discussion.
Just to be clear, I didn't get to all of them.
Okay.
But.
You've got till.
TikTok.
Okay. Okay, no, that's good. I, I, I trust your judgment on those things, Mike. Okay, and yeah, and you've made a few other change that, changes that, to me anyway, without going into detail, seem to make it a little more reasonable. Accomplishing the big goal, but also having some exceptions in place that just make kind of common sense for homeowners. And, and it definitely deals with the light trespass, which seemed to be the thing that was probably bothering more people than the question of wildlife, although the wildlife, um, aspect to it's in the, in the sky itself is.
Star gazing was way up there and then, um, light trespass and then bird migration.
Well, I know, I was happy to go out and see some stars last night. I hadn't seen any in quite a while, so anyway, that was that without compliance, but I'm sure it'll be even better, um, when we get there. Okay, so any other questions for Mike then?
Well, I did, I just, uh, uh, I think you're absolutely right that, uh, an ordinance like this is, i- enforcement is going to be complaint driven. Uh, you're not going to ride around town looking for violators. You're going to wait to hear from people who say, hey, my neighbor's got a light, you know, in all likelihood. And because of that, I think community education is absolutely fundamental to getting people to understand what the, the rules are into, uh, in mo- in most cases, uh, we, we're going to gain compliance just voluntarily. Um, so I'm all for kind of a soft landing here with a grace period, but I'm a little concerned about, you know, what do you do in a situation where council passes an ordinance, declares something to be, um, unlawful? We may have a policy of wanting to ease into it, but if a particular individual has a particular problem with a particular neighbor and there's a ordinance on the books, how do we deal with that? If they're, if they're saying, hey, what do you mean? You're, you, you've got an ordinance and you're not enforcing it, why not? I think as a, as a broad, uh, goal, you're on the right track, absolutely. But I just worry a little bit about, unless we said in the ordinance that, uh, the ordinance is, um, is not effective, you know, for 12 months or, but if we pass the ordinance, it's usually effective in 30 days. So I just think we have to think through the, the possibility of, um, the community education approach working for 99% of us, but we may have somebody, uh, uh, in a community who has a real problem, in a valid problem with a, a neighbor and they're going to want, uh, instant enforcement. So I don't know if, if you're at all concerned about that or if there's a way for us to deal with that or.
Could I, could I make a suggestion? Um, could I ask that Mike and Leila take that concern away? Come back, think about and give your best judgment about whether that concern should be met in language in the ordinance or in something surrounding that, rather than, um, giving a detailed kind of thought about it now. Because we're trying to keep the ordinances organized and clear and then they don't have to be, we don't have to go back and redo them. So would that be, would that be our?
Oh, yeah, sure. I just, I, I think a solution to that is back to the comment I made about common sense. If that neighbor I was talking about, for instance, if you went and said you're in violation, we've got an ordinance, turn the switch off. You've got as long as you want to fix this so you can use that light again, but you've instantly corrected it by turning the light off. So something to think about in your discussions with Leila.
And I'm, I know I'm just feeling it because we're two and a half hours in, but. but I, I think we'd probably get a more fruitful discussion and steps by having counts you and staff take care of that and then come back. We have another, we have, Mike, you're going to be back here again with us and it'll be good.
I'll be right here.
You, you understand the difference between the common sense approach and what else we might need? And we're not going to go into all those details tonight, so we'll come back to it. Okay, does that satisfy you, Brad? All right. Okay, so we're not going to vote on this. We've just listened, Mike, we spoke. Mike, Leila, do you feel like you have enough direction from council on this one?
Yeah, maybe I could just clarify what, what I'm hearing tonight is just generally speaking, the content of the ordinance is acceptable, but you'd like us to discuss offline, kind of 1%, how we might address that. I think another thing we can talk about too, and perhaps engage you, Linda, on the communications outreach piece of it. My gut instinct is we wouldn't write something like that into the ordinance and I would defer to the officers to handle one-on-one situations, which they're very good at. But we can let, let us have a conversation about that and we'll add that back to the agenda next month for a full discussion.
Great.
Does that work?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, and thanks for listening. Oh, no, no, no.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, thank you.
We appreciate it. So next up, we've got the Planning Commission appointment and a short-term rental selection committee item. So you've got two actions. First is the selection of a selection committee recommendation, sorry, for a planning commission appointment. And second is the appointment of a member of the S T R committee and staff member to the selection committee to appoint two members to the S T R committee. That's a lot of selection and a lot of committee, but it'll all be clear here pretty soon.
In two seconds.
In two seconds. So council president Kozlowski is going to give us an overview of each of these actions.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. So there was an opening on the Planning Commission. Frank Squello and myself interviewed the applicants for the Planning Commission. And the selection was for a full-time position, a full-term position commencing March the 6th, 2024, for a period of three years. Karen Yurka was the only applicant for that position. And it was a joy to interview Karen Yurka. She has just been exemplary in terms of her, of her leadership of the Planning Commission. During her tenure, she added design review provisions and rewrote the signed standards ordinance to align with the federal law. She was instrumental in both of those efforts. For me, her strong interest in listening to the community at large was exemplified in the leadership role she took in the evaluation of Luba and the appeal of the Lofts Project. Her background in real estate law is excellent, and she looks forward as a member of the Planning Commission to the conferency plan review. She sees that as significant. So the selection committee highly recommends Karen Reddick Yurka for the position on the planning, the open position on the Planning Commission for a term commencing March 6th, 2024 and concluding March 1st, 2027.
Just to clarify, it's, it's a four-year term.
So it's a four, okay.
Twenty-eight then.
Twenty-eight, yeah.
So.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're going to.
Well, it, sorry, I'll correct that really quick. Because of the clerical error, this appointment should have been made in December.
Right.
So a four-year term would be December would be 2024, 25, 26, December 27.
Twenty-seven, okay. Thank you.
Okay, is there any comments from the public on this matter? All right.
Would you like to read the resolution?
Yes, the resolution, I've just gotten to it. Thank you, you're covering me, I got, I'm on the wrong page. So I'm looking for a motion to approve this resolution, appointing Karen Reddick Yurka to the Planning Commission. May I have that motion?
So moved.
Moved by Tom, seconded by Jerry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, say that's a most enthusiastic aye. Karen is.
Oh, she's wonderful.
She has given an incredible amount of energy and time to this position, devotedly taken the instruction and mentorship of the, the chair prior to her and has really moved that group forward. She's a humble leader and she listens emphatically and yet is can be very direct in her connections with people. It's a wonderful set of qualities when you're on that planning commission. And if any of you have never seen a planning commission meeting to really appreciate the work that Karen does, I recommend you tune in because it's, it's quite an art form and she's been working on developing that leadership for quite some time. So that's my additional why I voted aye. Okay, next up, we've got a.
Oh, let me, just one, just let me finish, just one real quick thing. So there are three openings on the S T R committee. I'd like to suggest that we propose a selection committee for that. I'd like to suggest Sergeant Mike be part of it since he's been involved with S T Rs. Joe Newhouse, who's the chair of the Short Term Rental Committee and myself, come back, accept that as the committee and then come back to the next council meeting with criteria for that position.
Okay, and that's in your role as the council liaison.
That's my role as the council liaison.
From that, okay.
And the terms will be how long on that?
Oh, there's three years.
Okay.
I, I do, before we move on.
Yes.
We didn't get a full vote of the council on the resolution.
You have us. Okay, so we can push a second, but not a, not a bill. Okay, yeah.
I knew it was only a matter of time before that happened, so here we go.
Well, it's late and we're like, yeah.
No, it's okay, we just want to make sure you get. We want to finish, want to finish good and clean. So let's back up a moment and may I ask for a vote on the nomination of Karen Reddick Yurka? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Thanks very much. Okay, so then this ended the motion to approve Joe Newhouse and Sergeant Mike Sims to the S T R selection committee. It doesn't really state it here, but it's given with, with you and your always liaison. So may I have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Okay, so this is a motion to approve Joe Newhouse and Sergeant Mike Sims to the S T R selection committee. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. Now, Mike voted for himself in the background, so that's. And it's nice to see the confidence in yourself there.
Nice that he wants to do it.
Yeah, okay. Now, Fourth of July Parade.
Yeah.
All right, so the last item, last item, for those of you who are here to the close, the last item on our business agenda tonight. I'm so sorry.
Next to the last.
I'm so sorry. We save the best for last. It's an admirable quality, Lee, thank you so much. So I apologize. The next item on this agenda is to appoint a member of the city council to serve as a liaison to the Fourth of July Parade Planning Committee. And Brad has got something to say about this.
I do.
Oh, I believe, I thought you did.
Well, I've, I've been approached by, by Leila about being the liaison to the Fourth of July Parade Committee. And I've agreed to take on that role. That was a role that, that councillor Brad Merrily had.
Yeah.
And so I've already reached out and spoken with Laura Bailey, Aaron Lasky, and Aaron is working on arranging a meet for the three of us plus Dan. And Leila suggested that we try to include Carolyn Greenwood in that discussion as well. So we're already working towards organizing that committee.
Even if it breaks.
Thank you.
Excellent. Is that how you really feel? No, it's great and I'm, I'm really looking forward to that. Brad Merrily has said he's reachable, I have his phone number.
I've already spoken to him as well.
He's good. No, no, it's good. He, he had, he ended up having a great time working on that.
Well, and I understand that they have a playbook leftover from last year. So it's going to make it all so easy that all I have to do is show up.
Right.
So I'm going to ask for a motion to approve Tom Campbell to serve as the Fourth of July Parade liaison.
So moved.
All right, in a second?
Second.
All right, Jerry, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we're on, and it is on the Fourth of July.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, our most frequently asked question.
Yeah.
Parade here. Okay, excellent. So we did save the best for last. Come on up, Lee.
Hey, I promise you, I know you all want to get home and get your comfy seats and you folks as well. So I'm not going to take too long, but I did want to take the opportunity tonight to share a little bit with you about the history and the progress and the activity associated with Public Works Augmentation Team. You probably heard P W A T before and wondered, wondered what that was. Some of you may not be familiar with the term at all, actually. Some of you who are new to the, to the council. But at any rate, not from this, just a little bit of history. When I was anointed the mask currently for the Emergency Volunteer Course some years back, five or six years ago, I recognized that a lot of the work that we were doing also kind of dovetailed with things that Dan was doing, even though Dan Weitzel, even though Dan was not the emergency manager at the time. So I'd spend some time with Dan and we commiserated about different things that we should think about in terms of increasing the resiliency and the continuity. And lo and behold, he became emergency manager, so that even made the deal better for me. We talked a lot about the way that things could be done, should be done, and we've actually implemented some of those things to the benefit of the community. So now turning to the, you know what, I want to, I want you all to recognize the size of the font.
Thank you.
That for you. But at any, at any rate, we are a totally volunteer group. We work for and in conjunction with Public Works, i.e. Dan. And actually, I need to change that top bullet, it says a volunteer group of six citizens. There are actually seven now. We're very fortunate that a previous Public Works employee, Jason Lees, who just left a couple of weeks ago, said, I want to join you guys. Must be part of, part of the group. So we're really, we're really thrilled about that because Jason obviously brings wealth of experience, knowledge and enthusiasm for what we do. So we are trained in this, in the skills necessary to support the Public Works team when they're, you know, some of those folks are kind of remote, so they may not be able to get into town if they were required to perform some duty. So it could be when they're overwhelmed, it could be when they need extra time to complete a project. And we're also there to maintain operations during and after a disaster. One of the things that we've been able to do so far in bringing these other people on board to, to be part of this group is that all but one of them live outside the inundation zone. And they also live fairly close to Public Works facilities. So that wasn't by accident, it was a thoughtful, a thoughtful effort to make sure that we had a better opportunity to take care of the folks here in the community. Josh, are you running the show? Put it on you.
I got you.
So this is what we've done to date. We've most recently taken a flagging class, which was really involved. It was a four-hour class and I learned a lot. And there's a lot that I'll never learn because it's pretty involved. We learned, we've learned about valve functions, how they work and the best way to operate them. The equipment locations for all the equipment throughout the city. We actually have access to city facilities with the exception of City Hall and the Police Department. But we can get into areas that the public can't with our, with our keys. So we also learned about the treatment plant functions, the facilities that are housed there and how they can best be utilized in the event of an emergency. Access to emergency water, there's 80,000 gallons, for those of you that don't know, there's 80,000 gallons of potable water underneath the treatment plant. And we would have access to those if public works staff were not able to, to respond to, to an issue. And we also have worked on a water trailer transport operation. So a few years ago, Dan got a water trailer and also known as a buffalo. And so we've, we've been trained on how to utilize that piece of equipment. Okay, Leila, thank you. We've aided Public Works staff. Any of you that were at the, it was called A R two, but essentially it was an exercise developed by the Department of Human Services. And we were the only location on the Oregon coast to be exposed to that equipment and the knowledge and the capabilities that they brought. They've become a great partner, by the way. But we assisted them and, and assisted public work staff in readying for that, for that event. We fabricated shelving for emergency supplies. I don't know if any of you have ever noticed, there's some Conex boxes back behind the water treatment plant. And those are, have a fair amount of emergency supplies in them, but they didn't have any adequate mechanism for storing and inventorying products. So we built these shelves and, and were able to keep a closer eye on the stuff that's in there, what comes and goes. We also, as I said, inventory all that equipment. We relocated and stored all the trailer equipment. One of the downsides to some of the decisions, not the decisions, one of the downsides to the building that we don't have available anymore, i.e. the Quonset hut. All of the equipment that was in there is now being stored outside. So that's added a bit of a, not a burden, a bit of a challenge to our group to maintain these trailers. We also, some of our group worked with the Christmas tree lighting ceremony and helped the public work staff ready for that. Thank you, Leila.
No, usually a little delay, sorry.
Oh, okay, you're still on board.
Good, right? This is the next one? Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So the projects that we've done to date, outside of just augmenting the public work staff, is on our own. We made a solar capability to a fuel trailer that Dan had sourced a few years ago. And it's made it, it's allowed it to be used out in the field more readily than having to have a vehicle there to assign power to the pump. Pump doesn't draw a lot of juice, but having a solar capability really has made a difference. The staff now uses it on a regular basis to fuel their equipment. We maintain the trailers on an ongoing basis and that's something I mentioned a moment ago, they're outside now. So it's a little bit more of a challenge to make sure that those pieces of equipment are ready to go. And to be clear, the public works equipment that they use on a regular basis, i.e. tractors and loaders and what have you, we don't touch those, that's their responsibility. But these are trailers that are housing equipment that are used on an irregular basis, more for emergency purposes, say, than day-to-day activities. We've identified military filtration components that Dan sourced and also a military mobile field kitchen that we'll take a look at here in a little bit. Go ahead, Leila. So some things that we have upcoming, we're going to complete the mobile filtration water trailer, have it ready to deploy. Any of you may be familiar with a water emergency in Klamath County about two summers ago. And had we had this trailer ready, we, P W A T, at least a couple of guys would have deployed down there and been able to supply them with clean potable drinking water. We're in the process of engineering, designing and fabricating a second mobile water trailer filtration system. And this will be done with, without the military components. This will be done with a series of filtration systems. And the purpose for that is that, you know, duplicity is great. If one system goes down, we've got another one that we can utilize. And we are going to complete the mobile military field kitchen. Right now, the burners that we sourced with it are, that's all right.
Go ahead.
Getting a little hazy.
No, 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 I'm, I'm workable. So the fuel transport trailer that I mentioned about doing a solar application, you can see the panels on the right, the trailer. you can see the panels on the right, the trailer on the left. That's up at Dan's shop up on Oak on a regular basis. If you drive by, you can, you can see it, not that you should, but. Go ahead, you can go back down to that one. I know you want to go home. I'm sorry.
I'm not rushing you, sorry.
I'm almost finished.
You're doing great.
So Dan got that trailer through a grant in twenty twenty called Aspire Grant that the State Department of Human Services, excuse me, Oregon Resilience and Emergency Management, offered those grants, and he got that trailer free. So, but again, to the benefit of utilization, P WAT has put those solar panels on the top, and there's a battery in a compartment in the back. And so as long as the trailer's got sunlight, they're able to use the pump. Okay, Leila, thank you. So we refitted this, this trailer. It's a mobile communication tower. And the tower, that's the way we got it. That's exactly what it looked like. It was in pretty rough shape, to say the least. So over a period of few months, we replaced all the decking, all the mechanical, the outriggers, so that it was more stable. We replaced all the mechanisms for, both for raising and lowering the tower. It goes up to forty feet, and it can be utilized to extend our communication capabilities, which is pretty dynamic. We put on new wheels, tires, and we epoxy painted the whole thing, and it looks really pretty now. Go ahead, Leila. On the left there is what it looks like today. Pretty spiffy, huh?
Yeah, very good.
So all of the, all of the mechanical mechanisms on the tower itself are, have been switched over to stainless, so it can endure the harsh environment that we have. And I think you can kind of see the outriggers there coming off the trailer. Before, they only went out about six or eight inches. Now they can actually extend about four feet, so when the trailer, when the tower's up, the trailer can't tip over. On the right is a generator that's mounted permanently on the trailer, and you can just see a corner of that box on the right there. It's a stainless steel or aluminum box. And that can be supplied now fitted with a mobile ham unit, radio unit, and it's ready to be, it's ready to be deployed with that. But at any rate, there's some equipment to go in there. We could also haul that someplace that might be needed. An example would be the fire two years ago down off of Alder, Alderbrook. They needed some communication that they didn't have, and had they had this down there, it would have benefited them a great deal. Go ahead, Leila. So this is a military filtration system that Dan sourced through state surplus, which is part of Oregon Emergency Management. He got this entire unit, by the way, the, the box that it came in, it was a wooden crate, and the crate had a label on it, and it was a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. That's what the military paid for that. And it had hardly been used at all. Dan got it, if he was here, he would probably correct me, but I think it was for two thousand dollars. So we just need to make sure that we know how to get all these bells and whistles operational all at the same time and get it dialed in. We've got a trailer for it. We can get all the equipment in the trailer now. We just need to figure out the best way to deploy it. Oh, and as it says there, fifteen hundred gallons per hour. That's pretty serious stuff, and including a desalination, so we can take water right out of the ocean and up into the, of the community. Go ahead. It's some of the rest of the equipment. You can see it's pretty, pretty large pieces of equipment heavy. The pieces down on the lower left there are what's called a reverse osmosis system that greatly benefits the capability of the system. Go ahead, Leila. So this military field kitchen was a real coup. Coos County called, and they said, hey, we've got this thing in a box. We don't know what it is. Do you want it? So we talked a little bit. Dan sent one of these guys down there with the dump truck to Coos County and put the boxes in the back of the truck, came back, we opened it up and went, this is brand new. It's never been used. But we are in the process, if you look on the right, down at the bottom underneath those cooking devices, there's some burners. The burners that came with it, I think there were five or six, but they run on gasoline. Well, we decided we don't, we don't want to risk anybody with gas, you know, gasoline and fire. And they actually have to heat the tanks up in order to pressurize them. That's what the military did till people got burned, and then they went to a new unit called the MBU five, and that runs on diesel, which is much safer, not nearly as volatile. So we're trying to source those, but there aren't very many of them out there. They're really hard to, hard to come by. Go ahead. I think that might be the end of it. Is it? No, oh, we got one more. That griddle on the right there, I can attest, weighs about two hundred pounds. I think I, that may be where I got my hurry in. I don't know. And I think that is it. So to end up, I'm speaking to audience, anybody that's on or anybody that's here, we always look for volunteers. If somebody would like, somebody who's mechanically inclined, they're able to devote six, eight, ten hours a month to a volunteer purpose for the benefit of the community, give Dan a call. I'm not going to put my information out there right now, but Dan Weitzel, Public Works Director, and he'll get in touch with me if we feel like, like something that you can offer to the group. So thank you for your time. Go get your comfy's on.
I just want to say one thing, Lee. What, what you have done with this group is expanded the capacity of our emergency manager to provide real resources during an emergency. It's just incredible what this group has done. And it, it appears you really love what you're doing, because when you get there, everybody's just really engaged. But we owe you and your team a debt of gratitude for what you're doing, and you are making us safer and more resilient in any kind of emergency. So thank you, Lee.
Well, thank you. Like, one thing I didn't, I didn't. One thing I didn't mention, but it's really paramount. We get together, we have fun. We're much old guys. We like the MacGyver stuff, you know. It's really cool. Yeah, but thank you.
Thank you, Lee. Thanks from all of us, Lee. And thank you for being so gracious at the end of a, a long agenda. So thanks very much. We appreciate it.
Yeah, well, I drug it out, but it's okay.
No, no, it's good.
Right on time?
Yeah, all right. Okay, have we got anything else for the good of the order?
Except to thank people who stayed for the whole evening. It's really very.
For anybody in future who's watching online and, and made it to this part of the meeting, and perhaps you're a MacGyver out there, and you've already been in touch with, with Dan at this point, but thanks for your participation. It's greatly appreciated by all of us. So everybody have a lovely evening, and I would like to adjourn this meeting at approximately nine oh three PM.